Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council Regular Meeting for September 13th, 2021. Tonight, we have Deputy City Clerk Karen Roberts filling in for Charmaine, and we have Deputy City Manager Kate Behrens filling in for Mr. Brad Miyake. So Deputy City Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale, can you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with one nation, our God, indivisible, liberty.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes, could you please read the welcoming week proclamation?
Yes, Mayor Robinson, and I want to say that I appreciate the honor. I read the first annual proclamation back as mayor in 2016 and be proud to read the version for today. The proclamation, on behalf of mayors, which I'll read at the end, the mayors of city, Eastside Cities of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish, here have jointly celebrated Eastside Welcoming Week for the past five years, and whereas these cities recognize the importance of ensuring that all residents feel safe, secure, and welcome, and whereas East King County is one of the most racially and ethically diverse regions in Washington State, and over 30% of our residents come from places outside the United States, and realizing our vision for a welcoming community requires actively addressing the lived experiences of those in our community who do not feel welcome, safe, valued, or included, and whereas recent events have highlighted the historic and current impacts of individual institutional and systemic racism that result in harmful disparities in education, employment, income, housing, criminal justice, and quality of life, as well as sense of belonging. And whereas our communities, like others across the nation, have structures, systems, and policies that contribute to injustice, racial inequality, and discriminatory treatment against residents who were born in another country, are Black, Indigenous, other people of color, LGBTC, and other identities, and whereas to capitalize on diversity as an asset, our community must strive to create a culture and environment that ensures that everyone can belong and thrive. Now, therefore, the mayors of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish, Washington jointly proclaim September 16th through 19th, 2021, as Eastside Welcoming Week, and invite the community to engage in opportunities during Eastside Welcoming Week and beyond to learn, connect across differences, and take joint action to achieve a welcoming, equitable, and inclusive community. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Penny Sweet, Mayor of Kirkland, Karen Moran, Mayor of Sammamish, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of Issaquah, and Angela Burney, Mayor of Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are 10 speakers signed up this evening, including seven people that have signed up to speak on the East Main Luca, five in support and two in opposition/concern. Per the council rules of procedure, a maximum of three persons are permitted to speak to each side of any one topic. If any of the first three people signed up to speak in support of East Main Luca do not attend, I will call on the fourth and potentially fifth speakers. Our first speaker signed up to speak tonight is Addie Smith.
Deputy City Clerk, I missed the approval of the agenda. Can I stick that in before we hear our first comment for oral communication? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Please proceed with the oral communication, sorry about that.
Don't worry. So moving on, I do not see this as kind of speak this evening. So moving on, our next speaker signed up to speak this evening is Barbara Chevalier. Ms. Chevalier, can you hear me?
I can, yes, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Can you hear me, okay?
Your time begins now.
Okay, oh, let me exit full screen. Okay, so Mayor Robinson and other council members, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I wanted to share with you my concerns about the state of trees in Bellevue. I know you're hearing reports tonight about the rapid pace of development in our city, new strategies to preserve publicly owned forested spaces, and the fact that fellow residents have expressed concerns about preserving trees on neighborhood walks. Now, the Parks and Community Services Board uses the term "natural infrastructure" in its July 13th memo to the council, and I absolutely love that term. And at the same time, I fear we're turning a blind eye, as some of the most important elements of that infrastructure are being absolutely decimated. In just the small area where I walk every day, we have lost over half a dozen huge mature trees in the last two years. And if this pace of tree loss continues, benefits that those trees provide and that residents both value and continue to tell the council they value, including their beauty, those welcome pockets of cool shade on increasingly hot summer days, and all the homes for birds and animals that inspire us and our kids, all of that will disappear. And our legacy will be hot sidewalks, ugly neighborhoods, and meager biodiversity. Now, I know that the council cannot solve all these problems, right? I know that climate change is responsible for significant tree losses, and that some trees do indeed need to be removed because they're sickly or dangerous. But I'm asking you to do whatever you can to protect our healthy trees now, because once they're gone, we will not see the likes of them during our lifetimes. I'm going to repeat that, these trees have been around for hundreds of years, and once they are gone, the character and feel of Bellevue will be changed permanently. Now, I, like a growing number of Bellevue residents, want my children to enjoy a Bellevue better than it was when we moved here. And trees, especially those big ones, are an integral part of what makes this place so beautiful, so livable, and so special. And I'm asking you to please act now to protect those trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker signed up to speak this evening is Ellen Weiss.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Weiss, your time starts now.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and council members. My name is Ellen Weiss, and I've been a Robinswood resident since 2006. I'd like to speak to you this evening about the increasing number of single-family home tear downs and construction of oversized, increasingly expensive builder homes that are permanently changing the character of our neighborhoods aesthetically, environmentally, and in terms of affordability. In particular, I'd like to address single-family properties of 10,000 square feet or less. I understand the importance of the affordable housing issue in Bellevue, and I understand that some of Bellevue's single-family residential neighborhoods may eventually experience upzoning to allow for a greater variety of housing types. However, not all affordable housing should be multifamily housing. Bellevue should protect and maintain its existing stock of affordable single-family residences by changing its land use codes. Many of Bellevue's single-family properties are greater than 10,000 square feet. By increasing development restrictions on properties of 10,000 square feet or less, Bellevue will be able to protect its most affordable single-family homes and ensure that new construction on these smaller lots is more aligned with the city's goals of maintaining neighborhood character, protecting Bellevue's tree canopy, and maintaining and increasing home affordability. I would propose that home additions and new construction on single-family residential lots of 10,000 square feet or less should be capped at 3,800 square feet, including garages. Currently, most new development on 10,000 square feet or less single-family lots is capping out at 5,000 square feet, including garages. And the median home price for these homes is continually increasing. A new 5,000-square-foot home is currently under construction next door to my home on a 9,400-square-foot lot. The house has been listed at 3.3 million. On August 2nd, just over a month ago, the same-sized house one block over from us, which was built by the same builder, sold for 2.96 million, an increase of 340,000 in one month's time. Our current land use codes are allowing builders to take us in the wrong direction, and these builders are racing as fast as they can to get as many of these oversized houses built before any changes in land use codes can stop them in their tracks. Let's do the right thing for our city and stop the rampant destruction of trees, building of oversized houses, and runaway increase in home prices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker signed up to speak this evening, and the first speaker signed up to speak in support of the East Main Luca is Jack McCalla.
Thank you very much, Karen, and hello, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's good to talk to you again about this topic. I just had a couple of quick comments to make about the 400-foot height issue that we discussed at the last council meeting. I think it was clear the last time we talked about the benefits of having a 400-foot height area on the eastern side of the East Main subarea along 405 with lower heights along 112th. We're building buildings that will be there for 100 years, and so we need to make good decisions. It was clear, I think, from our discussion that the 400-foot heights allowed more housing to be developed sooner, and more housing overall during the course of the project. And it would be better with these lower heights for the adjoining neighborhood at Surry Downs. So I was a little perplexed to look at the agenda memo for you, because I thought that council's direction was to seriously explore this alternative, and I just didn't see that in the agenda memo. And so I wanted to encourage the council to maintain its focus on this. It's a very, I think, important and logical goal for this site and this area. There has been some discussion about SEPA and what needs to happen in terms of environmental review if you look at taller heights, and all of you have probably seen the letter that I did about six months ago on this topic. It's not a difficult issue, as I pointed out in my letter. I mean, most of the work has already been done. The impacts from the shadow and viewpoint of view are actually less if you mass heights on the eastern side of the Red Lion site and lower the heights on 112th. And, you know, in the past six months, we've not really done much to move that forward. The point of SEPA, you know, is to help you as decision makers make better decisions, and it's not intended to be a process. It should, you know, delay or obstruct good planning decisions. So I just wanted to encourage you to stick to your principles here. We've got one chance to do this now for the next generation, and to do it right, the site will yet develop, and so let's make sure it's developed right. The 400-foot solution is one that I think most of you endorsed, and I would encourage you to continue to endorse it. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker signed up this evening, and the second speaker signed up to speak in support of the East Main Luca is Mon Wig.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Wig.
Thank you, thank you. This is Mon Wig, 4811, 134th Place, Southeast Bellevue, Washington. Honorable Mayor and council members, during the public hearing, we heard the public and you loud and clear that you want housing with affordable units in East Main as soon as possible to fill city needs, and that density should be maximized on this transit site. That was mentioned many times during the public hearing. At the outset, we want you to know that we also want housing, just like you do, so our objectives are totally aligned. As you all are aware, Bellevue is projecting high growth. With this projected growth, risk in Bellevue is not going to be overdevelopment but underdevelopment. All, we all need to think about what is coming in the future, and all of us must get ready for it. This is a 100-year decision. We need 400-foot heights along 114th and Main to allow mid-rise, justifiable now, residential construction along 112th. Unused far by building mid-rise residential buildings along 112th can then be used for high-rise buildings along 114th and Main. For your information, heights much taller than 400 feet are fairly common next to transit stations in Vancouver, Metro Town, Brentwood, NBC. So we should not hesitate to allow 400-foot heights on this unique site that is sandwiched between a freeway and a transit station. We are also requesting an effective 5.3 far after consideration for reductions due to the critical areas. Since minimum residential requirement is a percentage of total square feet, higher density will assure more housing as well as more affordable housing on the site. Land use code with the changes we have proposed will encourage a lot more residential housing than the minimum residential requirement. For your information, the traffic study in SEPA already studied up to 5.6 far, and far next door with affordable housing is six, and we are requesting 5.3. Please feel free to call us anytime with any questions. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker signed up tonight is actually our first speaker, Ms. Addie Smith, who has let me know that she is in the meeting. Ms. Smith, can you hear me?
Yes, can you, hold on. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your time starts now.
Hello, city council members. My name is Addie Smith. I'm a hate crime survivor. I live on Mercer Island. The reason I am speaking before you today is to commend you and to inform you about some things happening in your city. Congratulations for passing the new MFTE exemptions for low-income housing in apartments in the city. The current members of the Mercer Island City Council voted to end those MFTE exemptions here, multifamily tax exemptions. It is my hope that you Bellevue City Council members will make sure that the current employees responsible for the ARCH program are not responsible for the MFT program. These current ARCH program employees, include the director, have intentionally failed to monitor the ARCH program on Mercer Island. Not only is it a failure of the ARCH program, but the current Mercer Island City Manager, who is also responsible for the applicants and applications, the waitlist, and et cetera, have also failed the people on the waitlist for the ARCH program. I'm the former manager of the Hadley Apartments on Mercer Island. Because I would not violate federal law or Washington State law to allow a white woman who requested to be bumped up to the waitlist, that number one, she wasn't on, and number two, she did not qualify to be on, to live in one of those apartments in the ARCH program, she began to attack, threaten, harass, and stalk my teenage daughter and I. And this went on for months, and no one did anything about it. I went to the police, who refused to write police reports. I went to the Bellevue East District Court before Judge Marcus Naylor, and I provided proof to him, and I also requested that he subpoena the video for additional proof to show that this woman was attacking my daughter and I, and she was recruiting other white residents. She was telling these people that I was trying to move all of the Black people out to move Black people in, simply because the current members of the ARCH program, the directors and all, they weren't monitoring this program. So the previous manager was allowing people who didn't qualify to be bumped up that list and be moved into these apartments in the ARCH program. She found this out from one of her white friends. Had someone been monitoring this program, had the Mercer Island City Manager been monitoring this program, the attacks on my daughter and I, following her, asking her what kind of [BLEEP] she was because she's half Asian, or, you know, throwing things at me, hurling, you know, hurting me and things like that, would not have happened. It is time for you guys to step up, please. Number one, Marcus Naylor, Judge Marcus Naylor needs to go, and I'm going to speak again at the next council meeting for more, because my time is up.
Thank you. Our next speaker signed up tonight is Linda Hall.
Okay. Good evening. So Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council Members, my name is Linda Hall. I have lived and worked on the east side since 1999, and during this time, my professional and personal passion has been in the area of affordable housing and ensuring that we, as a community, do what we can to maintain some semblance of housing access for all, even as we all benefit from the incredible growth, wealth, and opportunities being experienced in our eastside neighborhoods. The East Main Luca presents an opportunity to advance collaboration that results in benefits for all, including public benefits that are really important for the city of Bellevue and its citizens. During the past 20-plus years, I learned that policy decisions have the most dramatic and significant influence on our community's production and preservation of truly affordable housing, and those decisions take boldness, foresight, and patience, looking at the long game. Across multiple eastside cities and within Seattle, I have personal experience being part of creating and managing affordable homes, which came about due to those policies that prioritize affordable homes in ways that also benefits developers. So guaranteeing affordable housing within this incredible area is an important, bold approach. We know too well that the market forces on their own will not ensure affordability. I haven't seen it work yet in any significant way. Therefore, I support requiring a housing minimum to ensure the creation of housing and going a step further to incorporate a housing incentive that prioritizes affordable housing. I encourage you to be bold in your decision-making related to East Main and think about the long-term implications, because when the market doesn't create the housing affordability we need, we can't go back. The opportunity is gone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker signed up to speak this evening is Bill Thurston. Mr. Thurston, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Good, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I represent the Bellevue Club. First and foremost, it's been many years since we've been working on this code, and it's critical that we get the job done as soon as possible, and I hope this year we can begin the real work to create this district as a viable opportunity that it was intended. WIG Properties is a linchpin to the success of this district, and they have done an incredible job in presenting the facts and details necessary to support the vision of their property. We support the envelope that they have provided and support the additional height, which more fully supports the requirements of residential needs. We urge the council to approve their request of WIG Properties. They have provided the city all the details, support this reality, which brings this vision forward. Hopefully, the code's going to be written in a broad bush to support the unique requirements of the Bellevue Club and the ongoing success of this development of this property. Our aim is to protect the club and enhance this community asset as a destination. We have begun to explore some conceptual ideas for our property. In this process, we have learned that the envelope for commercial and residential structures are varied, very different. Additional height supports the interest of residential development and the density to make this viable. The many interests we have to incorporate into the expansion of this community will emphasize quality and setting that is more limited. Our members can only embrace objectives which are extension of our traditions. Suitable parking is a must for any development to take place, and this is challenging on the limited property we have. We have previously expressed our concerns and appreciate the support that the city and the council has provided. We wish to thank you again for your ongoing support and look forward to speaking with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker signed up to speak this evening is Abigail DeWes.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and city council members. I'm a land use attorney from the Hillis Clark Firm, but I'm also here today speaking as a member of the Planning, Land Use, and Housing Committee for the Bellevue Chamber and as a Governmental Affairs Committee Chair for NAOP. We expect to be supportive of the East Main Luca eventually, but we have some real concerns with the staff proposal before you tonight. We have been working with a group of stakeholders on the East Main Luca for several years, and we want to see this rezone move forward promptly. However, there are several concerns which warrant more time and study. We absolutely support housing production in this area. It is vital. Adjacent to a light rail station, housing doesn't make more sense than anywhere else, but we're concerned with the proposal for a residential minimum. This is a really inflexible way to approach housing production, and a better way is through an amenity incentive system and development standards that encourage market rate and affordable housing production. The amenity incentive system should prioritize affordable housing production similar to BellRed, and the development standard should encourage the most affordable housing types near 112th. To test this incentive approach, we've engaged with Eco Northwest to validate our assumptions and the assumptions in the staff proposal. We respectfully request that you hold any formal direction on the housing minimum until we can share this additional information, and you have all of the facts in front of you. You also heard from Jack McCalla tonight about the height. We support the stakeholder proposal and the city proposal at 300 feet, but would also support going to 400 feet with a development agreement. This makes sense and should be allowed under the SEPA framework that has been done and shouldn't delay things further. Thanks so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Mayor, at this point, that is the end of our pre-registered list. Are there any members of the public connected to this meeting that would like to speak and did not pre-register? If so, please use the raise hand function in Zoom if you are connected with a computer, or use *9 to raise your hand if you are connected with a telephone. Mayor, no one has raised their hands, and therefore that ends oral communications.
Okay, thank you very much. So on the agenda is Parks and Community Service Board Second Quarter 2021 Report. We are not going to read that tonight, but it is available to all of us online on the agenda. So moving on, we have the report of our Deputy City Manager Kate Behrens.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, council members, there is one item on the city manager's report tonight that is an overview of our neighborhood walk program for summer 2021. Here to present tonight are Mike McCormack-Huntleman, Assistant Director in Community Development, and Mark Heilman, our Neighborhood Outreach Manager. I'm going to turn it over to Mike to share some details.
Thank you very much, Deputy City
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Behrens, uh Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newan House. And Council Members, it's always a pleasure to be with you tonight. Tonight, we are going to share about the Neighborhood Walks Program. And one of the things you know about Neighborhood Walks is this is where our city leadership takes the advice of residents. To put on a pair of tennis shoes, come out, walk the neighborhoods and see what is going on in Bellevue through their eyes. And so what I love about um our city and city staff and leadership. Is the first thing they did when COVID restrictions eased is they said, let's go back out. Let's talk to residents and get out in the community. And so we were able to do that this summer uh during a brief window where we we could ease up and engage our community. Neighborhood walks provide a different type of conversation. A place where we can dialogue and and discuss and listen uh to one another. And find out what's really important in neighborhood areas. Uh this last year, we did that in the neighborhoods of Somerset. Uh we were down in West Bellevue in Anatai. We were up in northeast Bellevue uh right there at Ardmore Park. And then we also did a virtual event that we hosted online to engage people remotely. And that featured focus in West Lake Sam, Cougar Mountain Lake Mont as well as Wilberton. One of the things that characterize these neighborhood walks, uh and I'll just share one example out in Somerset. I was talking with a resident who who pulled up next to me and he said, you know, I would never come to City Hall. I would never have this type of conversation with you. But because you're here, I wanna let you know what's going on in my neighborhood. Um and and that's the type of experience we had again and again. To highlight uh what we heard specifically in the neighborhoods, I want to turn things over to Mark Heilman. Our Neighborhood Outreach Manager to walk through uh the different neighborhoods and the type of themes that surfaced. Mark?
Thanks, Mike. Well, one of the things that I really love about Neighborhood Walks is it really allows our residents to host us. Uh we help with logistics and safety and scheduling, but it really is their neighborhood where they get to discuss with us as as staff and with council and city leaders, what's really important to them, what's unique about their neighborhoods. And what are some of the emerging or kind of lingering concerns as well? It's genuinely a very different relational and visual experience uh to actually be guests in our wonderful various and very unique neighborhoods. So as Mike mentioned, our first walk was in Somerset. Uh we were fortunate, this year we had great weather. Um a couple of years ago when we did all the walks in person, it rained every night. Um doing August walks worked pretty well. So first in Somerset, we had our largest walk with fifty-five residents. And a lot of that is due to just a great partnership with the Somerset community there. Couple of specifics that were mentioned was gratitude for uh the diversity teams initiative on hate has no uh home here signs and distribution of those in in their neighborhood. Gratitude for utilities and their response to a surface water issue. And then some other things that were mentioned was Somerset always loves their views, which is why most people live there. But also concerns about view parking, loitering and and crime that have been happening. Uh but also a lot of response to how uh police have interacted and and helped with those issues. Next, as Mike mentioned, we're in West Bellevue in the Anatai neighborhood. And um some things that were unique about this walk were uh learning about some of the history from residents that have been there a while and have researched the history. But also hearing again, which we anticipated, but it's great to do there in the neighborhood, is the passion for the area's character and trees. And then concern about wanting to continue the rustic nature of the area. Uh one of the things that we do is we go to areas that um that residents ask for us and things that we hear about um continuing uh continually. So so we walk by some of the challenge areas and have discussions about those. Third, we did a virtual walk. Um it's pretty intimate. We had about eight folks with us. But as Mike mentioned, we had some great residents that talked specifically about their neighborhood. And it's just a really great opportunity for us to continue to explore how will we do accessible, online, virtual connections with our community. All three of the folks that spoke, uh none of them were enthused about doing it. But they just do an incredible job of describing what is unique about Wilberton, uh Spirit Ridge, West Lake Sammamish and Cougar Mountain Lake Mont. And then finally, uh our last walk was in northeast area. Heard things about uh just how safe the area is and diverse and love the friendliness of neighbors. Uh had a number of comments about the King County Purchase of the Silver Cloud Hotel in Redmond. And requests, as we've heard from folks in the overlake area, uh just encouragement for uh inter-jurisdictional communication and updates. So just finally, at each of the neighborhood walks and subsequent to that, we hear appreciation for the city's outreach uh from everyone in in leadership and service. Uh and we always get great ideas from residents that we do our best to to incorporate uh with some specifics around um multifamily and continuing to reach out to folks that we don't hear from on a regular basis. So we really appreciate the opportunity for Brad initiating this, for the city manager, helping to lead this. And just the opportunity to visit with residents in places where they get to host us in the neighborhoods that they love.
Just as a a close, we do have a full summary and report of Neighborhood Walks posted online at our Neighborhood Services page. Uh so you can find that and uh read all of the comments uh that residents provided throughout the summer. And thank you very much for council for coming and participating in these as well. It really matters, uh your presence and your ability to show up and listen to residents. Really is a powerful statement for city's leadership and endorsement of this two-way communication. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh they're really great and I appreciate that presentation tonight. Um next we have Council Business and New Initiatives, Council Member Lee. You have something you would like to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to speak to the council this evening. We meet many good people in our lifetime, who have qualities that inspire us to become better. Our experiences are often one-on-one through friends, family and work. Yet, very few of those good people have such an influence that inspire a whole community to become better. One of such individuals, John Ellis. I'm very, very proud to uh have the opportunity to propose uh the renaming of Mercer Slough Environmental Center to Jim Ellis Environmental Education Center at Mercer Slough. Uh because John Ellis is such a person. And uh it's hard to say everything about him. Uh he passed away uh a couple of years ago at a ripe age of ninety-something. And so he has done a lot with this region. And he's, uh I just want to quickly mention a couple, which is uh particularly important, stands out. And the rest of them is in your packet. So I hope that uh you know you would take time to, if you have not, to take a look at it. And uh he is known as the father of Forward Thrust. And uh in the nineteen fifties and sixties, Lake Washington was very polluted and not safe. People see signs in the lake that you cannot even go near it, cannot swim. And uh he, John Ellis, brought together citizens with local and state officials to initiate cleaning up the Lake Mercer Slough and made it out Bow Bay. Uh because his efforts, Seattle King County Municipal League named him Citizen of the Year in nineteen sixty. And President Nixon even offered him the job of becoming the first director of the Environmental Protection Agency, which he turned down. Saying that he believed he could be more effective as a citizen, as a private citizen in his hometown. And he's very right, you know, John throughout his lifetime was very effective improving the quality of life for everyone in this community. Uh as uh he led the Forward Thrust, for most of you, if you don't know, because it's in the sixties, seventies, so long ago. Uh I want to just point out quickly, uh he expanded the parks system for the King County. He cleaned up natural areas, funding highway improvements and improving public amenities, including the kingdom. The fire facilities, public swimming pools and the youth service center. He also founded the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust that achieved preserving one point five million acres of land between Seattle and Allenspur, Washington. So when the city of Bellevue was considering an education facility that would be devoted to teaching the next generation about the importance of natural environment of the local area. Jim Ellis was ready and actively attracted donors to pay for the construction and environmentally friendly facility next to the Mercer Slough. So this is just a very brief uh description of what he has done for the community. And in his fifty-sixties years of his pub- uh pri- public service as a private citizen. And he has indeed provided a legacy for this region and for young people for the future. And for our environment, which is obviously very important to all of us. So it seems to be very reasonable and it's a uh wonderful thing uh to name the or rename the Environmental Center uh to Jim Ellis Environmental Education Center at Mercer Slough in honor of Jim Ellis. Several principles have been considered. One is is contribution to Bellevue and its neighborhood. It's extraordinary. The second, the environmental center is directly tied to Mister Ellis's life work. Three is the recognition is consistent with the wishes of the family. And uh Pacific Science Center was a major donor and continues to provide much of the programming to this day. And I communicate here with Will Doughty, uh the director of the Pacific Science Center, who affirmed who are uh that uh the Pacific Science Center has no objection uh to naming the Environmental Center after Mister Ellis. I also spe- spoke with Emma Ellis's family. They believe the Environmental Center is the best representation of the legacy and fully endorsed naming the place after. And I also conclude consulted other major donors who all endorse this idea but who who wish to see Jim Ellis honored this way. And then I researched the procedural procedure that city has adopted in two thousand.
Councilmember Lee, I feel like you've covered this in your uh in the agenda item in the in the packet. And you've done a really good presentation here. So can you wrap this up, please, so we can?
Yes, my proposal recommendation that city council is to name this to uh honor Mister Ellis. And it uh is consistent and follows all the procedure or the practices of the city and city council. And I named a few of the paragraphs in the resolution. And I believe that the service significance of Mister Ellis uh deserved this honor. And so I uh again, I hope that this will be something that council will support. And I'm eager to hear from my fellow council members. So if the council agrees and gives direction, staff will prepare legislation to action.
I've got your point. And we, I'm gonna stop you there. You've done a nice job and we understand your request. I'm gonna ask you to stop talking, please, so that we can have a discussion. We have a lot of things on our calendar tonight. So um are there any comments or questions from uh council that ask is that uh council direct staff to um rename the Environmental Education Center after Jim Ellis? Are there any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. I thank you, Councilmember Lee, for bringing this up. Um I think, you know, I we're very careful about naming things after people. But in this case, I think it is very much warranted. Um Jim Ellis was one of the um he was the chair of the fundraising campaign for the Mercer Slough Environmental Center. And as you said, all of his connections, he was also, and you didn't mention, he was um the linchpin behind the funding of Metro. Uh King County Metro, which was dealt with cleaning up, not just cleaning up the lake, but transit and everything else and Mountains to Sound Greenway. He's been a huge figure, um not just in Bellevue, but in the county and really in the state for parks, preservation, recreation issues. And I think it's warranted. So I would support a motion to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
I I uh actually have uh talked with him. I worked uh with John Ellis a lot. And I know the history of this and I think it, he's he's an amazing person and contributed a lot. The the one, I just wonder why it's coming up at this time uh particularly um with all the other things going on around us uh for recognition. And um it seems to be, I know we have some places named for people, but uh we had a long discussion on parks, uh naming, uh why would, about naming city properties for individuals. Uh some cities do that and everything they have is named for somebody. Uh we have not done that and we um I think it will set a precedent and then we, then it becomes who decides and finds the next person and brings them up to get the uh uh you know, uh bring it to light. Uh it just seems to me to be a a kind of a misuse of um an individual's legacy at this point. And a little strange to be doing that um when we've had these conversations about not naming other places for individuals but for the community. And I don't think um, I'm not sure that John Ellis would uh particularly care or even like it. But uh anyways, it's just, it's kind of odd at this time. Thank you. Jim Ellis.
Uh anybody else have a comment or question? Councilmember Barxdale, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um so, you know, I I read not only the materials in the packet, but also a couple of the articles about Jim Ellis. And appreciated his work, especially given some of the opposition in the community at the time. Um similar to what Councilmember Stokes said, I mean, we had that conversation about naming of parks. Uh I, you know, if we uh if we move, if it does turn out that we move forward with this. I would, what I would be interested in is uh what does that look like over time in terms of um from a programmatic perspective, like how do we make sure that as we consider names, um that we also consider diversity and equity? So um I don't know if it necessarily is before this or after this, but I would, if we do move forward with this, I would like for us to think about this more holistically, so that we can ensure that there's equity included in the in the naming of uh Bellevue. Parks and such.
Hey, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um first, I just want to thank Councilmember Lee for um doing this work and the presentation tonight. You know, there there's some uh good comments all around here and um you know, certainly, I I don't think um you know, anyone can um really downplay the the impact that Jim Ellis had on our community and in in this region. Um and again, Councilmember Lee, I really appreciate you preparing all the materials. He certainly is worthy of it um of the of the remani- renaming of the Environmental uh s- center at the Mercer Slough. So um you know, I'm I'm supportive of it. I I think there is a need for a greater conversation as well in terms of of naming. Um go- going forward, I don't see anything wrong with that. However, I don't see that necessarily stopping us from moving forward uh with this tonight. Um but um but still, I think good questions and good conversation all around. But still, I think uh this is worthy of moving forward as well. So thank you again, Councilmember Lee.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. I would say that similar to my colleagues. I mean, I I agree that the Mercer Slough Environmental Education Center appears to be the right um building for this type of honor for Jim Ellis. I will um re- reinforce the comments that have been made about our previous conversation about not naming parks after people. And I will just tell you that the Parks Board was very confused about the fact that we had criteria that said that we were allowed to consider names, but then the council directed otherwise without changing the criteria. So I would just um urge the council to take this up sooner rather than later to revisit how we look at naming and criteria. Otherwise, we will continue to have, I think, a lot of confusion with our Parks Board and perhaps perhaps other boards and commissions as well about how we think about um these types of. um these types of uh naming opportunities. Thank you.
Uh Councilmember Zon, I think you make a very good point that we should uh follow up with maybe at our next retreat. Um Kate, if you could write that down as something to do. Um you know, it's funny, I'm a little conflicted on this because I really admire what Jim Ellis did for our community. I also really admire what John Ellis did has done for our community. He is a big reason we have a Bellevue Downtown Park. And he is a big reason why we completed the circle. So you have two people, brothers, who have been had a a massive positive impact on our community. So I kinda wanna just call it the Ellis Mercer Island Educational Center or Mercer Slough Educational Center, but um that's just my choice. I don't personally feel like this is uh, even though we legally can, it's it's this description of our role as a council. I don't feel like this is something I think the council should do. I like what the Parks Boards do. They do public outreach. They really research this. I would actually like to move this over to the Parks Board and ask for their recommendation of a name and see if they, how they feel about naming it Jim Ellis or naming it just the Ellis. Uh whatever um if, but that would, if we went with just the last name, I would ask if Councilmember Lee felt okay about that. But my uh recommendation would be to move this decision to the Parks Board and then get their recommendation. Do, is anybody, um can you, Councilmember Barksdale, but then I'd just like to see if anybody, how you feel about that. So go ahead, Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you. Uh I was actually just gonna say, if if we do that, which I I think it's a good idea, I think it would be a good time for them to also consider points about how we approach naming parks and other uh spaces.
Thank you. You know, I meant to say that that um to for them to u- utilize some of the procedures that we have in place, which includes includes inequity let's. Um are, so can I have a head nod or head shake whether you think you this could go to the Parks Board and have them make a decision, Councilmember Robertson, and followed by Stokes?
Thank you. Um so I don't really have a strong feeling one way or another. Normally, when we send things to the Parks Board, it's because we want them to come up with something. Um whereas this council uh has this idea about um Jim Ellis or Ellis, and I, you know, I agree, John Ellis has done tremendously good for for Bellevue as well. Um so I think if we're gonna send it to the Parks Board, it should be, you know, the question of, should it be Jim Ellis? Should it be John Ellis? Should, I mean, or should it be John and Jim Ellis or Ellis, you know, that kind of question so that they have something to grapple with? Because otherwise, I don't really see the point of getting the Parks Board's input on, should we do it? Well, that we can decide that ourselves. So um that's my thought. And just uh for the record, we do have another park named after someone. We have the Georgia Zimdike Park. Um but uh it is a rare thing, and in this case, as I said before, I think that it's worthy of it being a rare thing that we do, um because Jim and John are both amazing people who've done a wonderful for our community. So but I'm I'm good either way. Whatever council wants to do, I'm happy to vote tonight, or we can just send it on.
Councilmember Stokes, followed by Councilmembers on.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it um and and you know, there's always a concern bringing something like this up and then wanting to rush to vote on it. At the sp- you know, spur of the moment. Uh and I think the issue of, I know we have one park named after that, and we kinda said, that's gonna be the last one. And um I I I think it's something big enough that we need to look at it a little more, think about it when you bring something up like this. And we have the Parks Board and they could have a good conversation, and I think it could have a good outcome uh doing it that way. I think it's much more uh in public and and um done, not looking like it's just something we rushed through because it was a good idea or something.
Thank you. Councilmembers on.
Yeah, so I, I would like to propose that it is broader than broader than just going to the Parks Board and saying, is it Jim Ellis or is it the Ellis Building? That it is about the having them evaluate the criteria for naming and getting really clear about what that criteria is, considering the equity piece. And the first order of a naming would be the Mercer Slough Environmental Education Center. And considering the Jim Ellis name or the broader Ellis family name. Because I I will say that when, when the Parks Board met, they actually talked about the fact that there was a Zimdike Park. So why for Newport, wasn't there an ability to name it after a person? So I do think that this is a a unique opportunity to both develop or or vet the criteria we currently have and make any changes. And consider this first ask by Councilmember Lee as the the first named being considered.
Well, I, this problem I have with that is the ask is not to rename the environmental center. The ask is to rename it after a particular person. So what we're voting on tonight is whether we want to name it after Jim Ellis, the Ellis family, or not. And I'm adding in that if we consider doing that, we should send it to the Parks Board to make the final determination. So uh your motion would be just about renaming the Environmental Education Center, which is not what Councilmember Lee has proposed here tonight. So I think you should think about that with your vote. Deputy Mayor, do you have a comment?
Not, thank you.
So uh the vote that we have before us. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
There are two issues here. Uh one issue is that is the Alice, Jim Ellis deserve or design. Okay, look at that. And two, I fully agree with the mayor. John Ellis is also is a great person, great achievement. And uh that's just a separate question, separate issue. Maybe we can have a separate honor, you know, don't get things confused. And uh so absolutely, okay, that's one issue. That's a straightforward, simple issue. I mean, it doesn't need to be taking council's time to be controversial about it. If you like it, say you do. If you don't like it, say no, okay? The other thing you're talking about is if you wanna set up a criteria determining what is necessary, what's appropriate, or what are the criteria, how do you consider? That's a separate issue. Let's take time to understand that study. Don't mix it up. Uh don't get political person or everything involved. I would support, I would support. Make the decision separately. Uh I would support, look at criteria, do whatever we wanna do. It's a concept prerogative. But to put the the things on the table is is Mr. Jim Ellis worthy of our honoring? It is, and let's do.
So you don't like the idea of just naming it the Ellis? You wanna remove that as an op- as an option?
Not at this point, unless we somehow, you just came up with the idea and I think, yeah, we was want to consider. You know, you have to consult. We, yeah, uh you you are they, do they want to be together? I don't know. It's up to Mr. Ellis to decide.
So let's see.
Just don't make assumptions, just because we wanted the seven of us. Next year, there'll be different fe- people, not the same same seven of us. Two years from now, it'll be different seven of us. So don't, don't make it as a rule. Wanted to do it, okay?
So so I'm wondering if the motion could be to have the Parks Board uh assess renaming the Mercer Slough Environmental Education Center to be either the Jim Ellis, the John and Jim Ellis, or the Ellis. And it could be none of those. They could decide not to rename it. Does that sound like a good motion or do, Mr. Lee?
I would like to make a motion first. Let's do a step at a time. Yeah, and and again, this is a politics, that's a city council procedure, that's democracy. Let's work it down to see clearly what we are really choosing. My first motion would be if anybody wants to do it, otherwise, nobody wants to make that motion. I would move to have the council approve this proposal. And I will have a second, then if there is a vote, we'll vote.
Read the motion on your, read your motion on the agenda.
I will propose the City Council to direct the staff to rename uh Mercer Slough Environmental S- Center to Jim Ellis Environmental Education Center at Mercer Slough.
Is there a second? Okay, not seeing one. Uh maybe uh could somebody else do my motion or shall I do it? Or Councilmember Robertson?
I will. And I and I, comrade, I would have seconded your motion, but I sensed where the council was. And I didn't wanna spend time making speeches and voting when I didn't think it would pass.
Don't, don't need to explain.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say, you know, I supported that. Um so I would move to direct staff to transmit to the Parks Board a um a discussion for recommendation to the council about renaming the Mercer Slough Environmental Center for Jim Ellis or Jim and John Ellis or for the Ellis family and to bring that recommendation back to council for action.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, great. I appreciate Councilmember Lee bringing this forward tonight. You did a nice presentation. And I'm looking forward to the Parks Board's recommendation, and thank you, Councilmembers on for overseeing that. Uh okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and we have two study session items tonight. Uh Deputy City Manager, would you like to introduce the first one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. The first item tonight is the continued discussion of the East Main Station Area Land Use Code Amendment. Uh there have been a pr- series of study sessions for the council on this topic. Tonight's focus is uh twofold. One, we are looking for confirmation of the proposed process to bring forward identified topics for decision as we build our way to that final land use code amendment. So there's some process questions there. And uh the second is to provide some additional detail and context specifically around the topics of building hi- height and housing. Uh that last bit is not for direction, it is for uh building the council's um additional information to prepare you for a future decision on those topics. Uh but tonight, we would welcome any feedback about whether more information would be helpful on those topics as you do look forward to uh future study sessions where we will be seeking direction on on those topics. Um tonight, we're joined by Mike Brennan, Trisna Tanis, and Nick Whipple from the Development Services Department, as well as Matt Cummins and Emil King from uh the Community Development Department. I'm gonna turn it over to Mike to tee up the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Barons. Good evening, um Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newhouse, and council members. Um as Ms. Barons uh mentioned, we are here this evening to continue the discussions with the council on the East Main Land Use Code Amendments. Uh next slide, please. As um as Ms. Barons noted, and I won't restate it, we are seeking direction on a process and on and providing some additional information for the council as directed on building heights and housing. Next slide, please. So the general topics for the discussion this evening include just a process overview. Um I'll touch on a kind of a high level process, and then we'll dive into a little bit more detail, a little bit further in the presentation. Um kind of a little bit about the framework around the city needs, specifically around housing that you're continuing to hear about. Uh so we'll provide some framing information related to housing and opportunities that the East Main uh planning area presents. And we'll talk specifically about the timeline um and the the specific uh decision points that we were uh seeking from the council uh leading to final adoption. Uh and then uh we'll be providing some, a little deeper dive on the topic areas of of housing uh urban form uh and options that um are presented in the agenda materials for the council's consideration. Next slide, please. So uh a high level um kind of overview of the timeline. Um we'll share a little bit more detail on the specific topics under each one of these boxes, just a bit further down in the presentation. But first of all, um we held the, or the council held the public hearing in July, on July twenty sixth, where you um heard feedback from stakeholders in the community. Following the public hearing, the council is in a position now uh to adopt the code. Um when you reach the place where you are comfortable with the content as provided to staff and and we create that that final draft for your uh final action. So um we are now in a place where the council uh essentially can steer to the finish line uh without a lot of uh additional uh work around the public hearing uh frame. We are here this evening to talk specifically about building height and building form and the housing elements that are included in the code. Uh in October, coming back again on October fourth, I believe, with some additional discussion around the F A R amenities, options, and development agreement. And in that meeting, um we'll be looking for some direction from the council. And again, as you mentioned, we'll uh talk about the specifics of that direction in just a few minutes. Uh following that study session, we'll be bringing back additional information and looking for uh direction from the council on building height and the housing elements within the code, floor plate size. Uh and then some other topics um that the council had listed, um wanting some additional information on, uh following the public hearing and your discussions then. And then the study session, uh number seven, um dealing with nonconforming uses and exceptions to allow for expansion of the Bellevue Athletic Club, which was uh a direction that the council um uh provided to us following the public hearing. And then um looking to get to a final adoption. Uh this schedule shows us that final adoption uh just before the end of the year. Again, um it really amounts to uh the time it takes the council to get comfortable with the content of the uh draft code and then any final direction that you want to give to the staff. Um remembering that the code that is uh was uh presented at the public hearing is a code that is um aligned with the policy direction that the council has provided in the comprehensive plan uh and could be adopted at any point along this path. So again, uh council uh is in a position now to uh move forward with final adoption uh when you are comfortable with the code content. So with a little additional information on the framework and opportunities in the East Main area, I'm gonna hand it to the Director of the Community Development Department, Matt Cummins. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Um uh council, if we jump to the next slide here, um we wanted to start tonight's uh discussion with talking about where we started and where we're headed. Um and I'm sure everyone has seen some of these kinds of policy statements that talk about creating a mixed-use neighborhood in the East Main Planning Area. The two uh topical areas we're gonna cover tonight are height and housing. And we thought it might be worthwhile to talk about some of the other forums where the council has had these conversations. In fact, many of you may recall last week when we talked to you about our economic development strategy, um how much growth opportunity there is in the city and how strong the office market is. In fact, it's so strong that we're seeing record numbers uh in terms of total investment and permit activity and so forth. And you'll be getting a presentation later on this evening from Mr. Brennan's team on all of those things as well. The foundational question the council is going to be asked here um as we walk through this process to adopt a land use code is uh how does the city wanna plan itself going forward? In fact, many times, um when we're out in public, and I know the council has asked this question um frequently, both of yourselves and of your leadership team. Are we planning for all this growth? Have we planned for all the the hyperactivity and development that's coming online now? And in fact, it's these types of opportunities as we look at East Main and Wilberton and a few of the other major planning initiatives that the city will have an opportunity to ask and answer those questions. And indeed, one of the biggest policy challenges facing the city right now is the profound housing shortage and how to go about adding housing. As council will recall, we've talked overtly about protecting quality of life and single-family neighborhoods and looking to grow very smartly in our urban areas. Um and in looking to expand some urban areas, um particularly around transit and the opportunity to um capitalize on transportation infrastructure that allows for higher densities than were never contemplated before when we were a more suburban um place in the region. So if we hop to the next slide, I wanna talk a little bit about city needs and the policy tensions that are that are going to be discussed, both this evening and stretching into your next couple of study sessions. The moniker, the idea of quote-unquote "height for housing" is a pretty interesting slogan that people are now starting to talk about. In fact, that's something that City's been talking about for some time, the idea of wanting to grow taller around transit in exchange for land uses uh and the opportunity to grow in a smart way around that transportation infrastructure. The policy tensions that are going to start to come up. The policy tensions that are going to start to come up are how big is too big? How big is too big close to a single-family neighborhood? So for example, we're gonna walk you through in a minute the different opportu- or alternatives that you have in front of you. Um, and the idea of what we used to affectionately call the wedding cake, the idea that we would step down from the tallest, most intense development in the center of the downtown to the outside of the downtown and then get substantially smaller outside of downtown, uh, is in question as you're looking at your alternatives. Um, multiple alternat- alternatives actually provide more height and, and denser development uh, than is allowed in the downtown directly north of Main Street. And so the question then for you all is how much bigger are you interested in outside of downtown? And we've got some graphics to help articulate what that looks like. Including, uh, you know, if, if something more than three hundred feet uh, is considered, you know, that, that would be a substantial change in the ideology, um, and the value around the wedding cake. So we'll help you walk through you, that for you and, and talk with you about the values of the wedding cake and how it's applied around the periphery of downtown. Um, also wanna talk about the minimum housing requirement, um, as that comes up and the idea of planning for and requiring residential. Um, and that also spills into the FAR discussion, which was gonna come up at your next um, study session or study sessions. So if we slip to the um, next slide, wanna talk a little bit about uh, job growth and housing. Um, you know, it's a really good problem to have that the market is so strong and our economic policies, particularly around taxation uh, and planning have gotten us to where we are, that there's so much demand for office growth that we're attracting companies and success is be getting more success. I think as everyone on the council knows, but I'll mention for the public, we are now facing a substantial jobs-housing imbalance and a, and a major issue with being short tens of thousands of housing units, which is putting great pressure on affordability in the city. So, an overt strategy that the council has asked us to look into and we are bringing back to you tonight is the idea of working on that jobs-housing imbalance, specifically looking at major up zones, uh, where significant value is being given to landowners and/or developers who are really different people, um, in exchange for providing uh, more housing rather than simply picking between housing um, or office. And the value add here is substantial. We'll talk about it uh, both tonight and at the FAR discussion. Um, going from a zero-point-five FAR for non-residential uses, uh, which does not generate a tremendous amount of intensity to a five-point-oh is a dramatic increase in value that the council is giving. And so what you've asked us to do is calibrate, um, between simply providing the housing, which is where the thirty percent minimum requirement comes from and sets an expectation in the marketplace around land value therein. But also to use the incentive system to help generate affordable housing. And that's the concept around setting a base FAR appropriately so that we can incent ourselves to create of the housing that's gonna be provided, a number of affordable units. So, um, these are numbers, we'll mention again, that we gave to the county and have now been adopted into the countywide uh, planning policies. And so these are the numbers that we will be shooting for in our next major comprehensive plan update. Um, these are numbers we're gonna aim for if not in East Main, you know, should we end up uh, planning now for less housing. Obviously, that would uh, create greater pressure in Wilburton or, or other planning areas should it not be provided here in East Main. So with that, I'm gonna hand it off to Ms. Tanis and we'll jump into more of the, the technical information.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cummins. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Uh, can I have the next slide, please? Um, this is the downtown wedding cake that, um, Mr. Cummins mentioned earlier. Um, you'll kinda see the, the framework, the urban form framework that has been established in downtown. Um, we've overlaid the East Main area just to the um, kinda eastern portion of the site. So you can uh, see that graphically and in comparison to the downtown area. Uh, next slide, please. So, following up on Mike's uh, description of the timeline, um, this slide really focuses on the sequencing of council's review of the list of topics that council identified at the public hearing for um, wanting further exploration. The list of topics include all of the stakeholder requests, um, from April twenty-eighth, May seventh, and June twenty-fifth. And it's captured in the table that's published in that study session, uh, number three on June twenty-sixth. And then the public hearing on July twenty-eighth. And for ease of reference, staff has included that um, in your packet as attachment C. And we did present that same table at the July twenty-eighth public hearing also. Um, we included also topics that council raised as part of their discussion, uh, following the public hearing. Um, I just wanted to note that the list of topics that you see here does not include any additional new requests from stakeholders that has come in in the last day or so. Um, staff's proposed sequencing recognizes that many of these topics are interrelated. And as Mike noted earlier, council has expressed an interest in moving this Luca forward, um, as efficiently and quickly as possible. To that, and we have sequenced council's review and um, we noted when council has to make decisions in order to meet the December adoption date that you saw in the previous timeline. We have highlighted with red boxes the decision points of all these topics. We are beginning tonight with the topics of building height and housing, as mentioned earlier. And again, based on council's desire to discuss these two topics together. And we will follow in study session five with a discussion on base FAR amenity options and the use of development agreements. For study session five, on October fourth, we will be asking decisions on these topics. Um, again, these topics are highlighted in that, those red boxes that you see. For the topics of building height and housing, these are topics that you're discussing tonight. Those are not highlighted in tonight's um, kinda uh, column there because we will be coming back and be looking for decisions on these in study session six on November first. And then so you'll see those highlighted in those red boxes. Um, this sequencing um, was intentional so that council will be able to consider FAR amenity options and the use of development agreements when deciding on height and housing provisions. On the same night, on November first, we will be also presenting and asking for decisions on floor plate and other minor topics. Uh, for study session six, I mean, seven, we will be covering uh, non-conforming provisions and exceptions for Bellevue Athletic Club, as Mike noted earlier. And um, as we've heard, that council is interested in um, in entertaining Bellevue Athletic Club's request, uh, that they are exempted from new requirements in this Luca for any expansions of their club that, um, they may be wanting to do. So we have suggested that this request can be accommodated using the existing conditions framework. So that we'll be discussing that in more detail at that study session. And then we'll be uh, presenting that information and analysis for council's consideration. Um, we anticipate to be able to present to council a final version of the Luca as an ordinance by December. Um, there are several factors to keep in mind that may affect this adoption day. Um, we are anticipating that we can meet the date if there is no new requests or new topics raised. Um, or that uh, we would not need any additional environmental or other in-depth analysis. And last, lastly, of course, this is um, assuming that we are able to get the uh, direction and decisions um, at those decision points in time. Um, so, next slide, please. So, per this sequencing and timeline, tonight, we are focused on the topics of housing and height. For these topics, as you heard earlier from um, from Mike and Mac, staff utilized the urban form uh, wedding cake framework and the very important jobs and housing balance that the city and council have prioritized. Council, of course, expressed an interest in exploring these topics together. So this slide summarizes the options available to council. Options A and B are package options for council's consideration. Um, although council uh, can potentially choose an option from the list under height, um, under minimum housing and under affordable housing incentive, sort of to mix and match uh, these options. Um, but just to provide a quick explanation of the options, um, option A is what is in the current draft Luca. Option B is what staff is recommending as a change that would be consistent with what the CAC and environmental analysis as well as um, add the number of housing and affordable housing units to meet the objectives of the jobs-housing balance. Um, this is of course something that we've heard uh, as a need uh, that the city and then that council has expressed. Um, the last row is what Stakeholder Wig Properties is suggesting. Um, staff has concerns about this request because the requested maximum height goes beyond what was studied before and only produces very few housing and affordable housing units. In the next several slides, we will go through in more detail these options, as well as the stakeholder request. Next slide, please. But before getting into those specific information and analysis, um, we do wanna give you some background information on the regulations that are currently in place. The existing zoning, as you know, is office and limited business or O L B. The maximum height in O L B is seventy-five feet. This district does not have a maximum FAR, but the maximum development density is really derived from a combination of height, impervious surface, lot coverage, building setbacks and a um, kinda a maximum of one building per two-acre site. So while there's no housing requirements or affordable housing incentive um, that's applicable now, by staff's estimation, these requirements that I spoke of earlier amount to a maximum development capacity of about one-point-oh FAR. So, um, next slide, please. Um, Mike, I'm now going to hand off the, the presentation to Nick Whipple, who will go through the options in more detail for you. Nick?
Thank you, Trisna, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Um, as Trisna mentioned in the earlier slide, there are two options that we have brought for council consideration this evening. And both options uh, will result in a significant upzone as compared to the current O L B zoning, um, which will greatly increase the value of the uh, of these properties. So this Luca will include incentive zoning, um, which is used when projects exceed the base building height or the base floor area ratio. And uh, we'll cover these terms and the incentive program in more detail at our next study session. Uh, but essentially, the premise of incentive zoning is that the city is giving properties something of high value, and we are taking a portion of that back for the public benefit. Um, it was important in the staff analysis not to overreach when taking a portion of benefit back for the public and to provide a program that will work. And of course, uh, if we aren't giving properties something of high value, then the incentive zoning cannot work. Um, but the results of the economic analysis show that incentive zoning can work in the East Main TOD. And housing and affordable housing are public benefits identified as essential components in the draft Luca and critical to implementing the vision, goals, and policies in the East Main CPA, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The two options do make meaningful steps towards addressing this need. So with the first option, which is the current draft, um, this option would apply to the East Main TOD High Block, which extends from Main Street to Southeast, Southeast Sixth Street. Um, it would include two-hundred-and-thirty-foot-tall building heights with twenty feet for mechanical screening, uh, a minimum housing requirement of thirty percent with the first seventy-five percent of a project's amenities provided through the affordable incentive option. Uh, this option has been analyzed by the Economic Analysis Report produced by the city's consultant um, and is deemed to be financially feasible. The Economic Analysis Report was included in the council library for reference. And the building height follows the council direction to utilize uh, the downtown O L B South Land Use District as a starting place. The height uh, matches the downtown O L B South, just north of Main Street. And uh, this option also uh, requires that all new development provide a minimum of thirty percent of the total project gross square footage as residential use. Um, so this is for the red line in the Hilton Parcels. We estimate that um, that would equate to about one-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-eight units that could be created in the neighborhood. And the argument for minimum housing requirement is that the office development creates jobs, which creates demand for housing. If we don't have housing for those workers, the projects create an impact on the whole city and region. So as mitigation, we do expect that the neighborhood would include a minimum amount of housing. And so the current draft, as well as option B, which we'll cover in the next slide, um, allow for a percentage of non-residential development to be built before the minimum residential must be provided. But the residential um, requirement is in place. And uh, for residential development, the amenity incentive system has a focus on affordable housing. So the uh, draft Luca requires that the first seventy-five percent of a project's amenities be earned from the affordable housing amenity. The remaining twenty-five percent of a project's amenities, uh, or required amenity points can be earned from any other amenity on our list. And then we estimate that uh, seventy affordable units could be created through the incentive program in East Main uh, for the combined red line and Hilton Parcels. Next slide, please. So staff has prepared visualizations uh, of the maximum building height in the draft Luca. So these are schematic views which show building envelopes, and they're not intended to uh, reflect floor area or density for, for the East Main site or for downtown. Um, so the top image is a schematic view from I four oh five. So if you were on I five, four oh five looking west, um, we see that the maximum building height matches the buildings on the same plane along a hundred-and-twelfth as you move north uh, into the downtown. Uh, the downtown O L B South Land Use District has the same heights as what's shown in the top image for East Main. And we see that the heights begin to step up north of Northeast Fourth Street as you enter into the O L B Central um, District, which is um, nearer to the downtown core. And then the bottom image is a schematic view looking north on a hundred-and-twelfth Avenue Southeast. Um, this view shows the building heights in Surrey Downs, which allow for thirty-five feet uh, tall buildings. And then the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall building height in East Main. Uh, the view shows the, the corner, so for the East Main site, that's the corner of a hundred-and-twelfth of Main Street, where the maximum building height would be two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Um, but uh, just uh, one tiny detail as you get further south from Main Street, uh, approximately three-hundred feet is what the land use code um, states. Then the building heights change, so you would have a maximum of seventy-foot-tall buildings within fifty feet of a hundred-and-twelfth. Um, this is to provide that graceful transition to the lower-density, single-family neighborhood. We wanted to be very thoughtful in how these buildings will transition between, um, you've got two uh, land use districts in the East Main areas. The TOD High District and the TOD Low District, which is south of Southeast Sixth. And we also wanted to be thoughtful on how the height transitions to downtown as well as to Surrey Downs. So, um, the, the option A um, uh, provides for those transitions. Next slide, please. So, option uh, B, this option also would apply to the East Main TOD High Block. Um, it includes an increase to the building height in the draft Luca, um, to three-hundred feet, when three-hundred-and-twenty feet with mechanical screening and an increase in the minimum housing requirement from thirty percent to thirty-five percent. And it provides that eighty percent of a project's amenities be provided through the affordable housing incentive option rather than seventy-five percent. Um, so the increase in building height is uh, based on feedback from council at the public hearing to look at building height increases in exchange for more housing in the TOD. Um, so an increase in building height from two-hundred-and-fifty feet to three-hundred-and-twenty feet is a valuable increase to the properties. And with council's previous direction to explore increasing the height, um, in exchange, uh, potentially adding requirements for housing and/or affordable housing, um, staff recommends increasing the maximum building height to three-hundred-and-twenty feet. Um, this uh, height limit is consistent, as mentioned earlier, with what the East Main CAC studied and endorsed, as well as what was studied in the environmental analysis. This recommended change to the draft Luca does prioritize additional uh, housing and affordable housing in exchange for the um, height increase. And it has a potential to generate uh, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen units for the red line and Hilton Parcels, um, which is about two-hundred-and-seventeen more residential units than the current draft and eighty-seven affordable housing units, uh, which is about seventeen additional housing, affordable housing units than the current draft Luca. Next slide, please. So with this slide, um, it's the same viewpoint. So the top image, um, we are looking at the uh, the building height uh, uh, along four oh five relative to downtown. And then uh, you can see there is a, a slight change, um, as you go, uh, as you're moving south from downtown to East Main. It does increase by about seventy feet or six stories, um, uh, taller in East Main. And then the bottom image shows the relationship to Surrey Downs, uh, and continues to allow for that transition to the single-family neighborhood there. Next slide, please. And so the, the last item that we wanted to talk about, uh, is the stakeholder request. So Stakeholder Wig Properties uh, has advocated for further increased building height and uh, reduced uh, housing, minimum housing requirement in the TOD. This request includes uh, four-hundred-foot-tall building heights with twenty feet for mechanical screening, a minimum housing requirement of just under nine percent, um, with the first seventy-five percent of a project's amenities provided through the affordable incentive program. The, uh, because there are fewer The uh because there are fewer housing units required, there are fewer affordable units, um despite having the same requirement to provide the first seventy five percent of the project's amenity as affordable housing. And we have heard from Wig Properties that high-rise development is not financially feasible at this time. Um, and just generally speaking, uh, we have looked at the market geographies in downtown and Belred and found that in the downtown, um, we've seen uh four high-rise residential development projects completed just in this past year. Um, there are three more that are currently under construction and two others uh that have received city approval um just over this past year. Belred is also seeing a lot of residential development. And additionally, we've learned uh from developers in downtown and Belred about ways to make residential development a more attractive option in Bellevue, and have applied some of those lessons learned to the draft Luca um to make it more attractive for for developers to build residential projects in East Main. Um, so some of those provisions uh that we've incorporated into the draft Luca include uh reduced minimum parking requirements for residential uses, larger floor plate sizes for residential projects. Um, we've included a provision for unlimited floor plate sizes for residential projects that are less than eighty feet tall. Um, we've also expanded the list of eligible ground floor uses in residential buildings. Um, we've heard from projects in downtown in particular and that it can be challenging sometimes to tenant the ground floor spaces under the um the guise of active use. And so based on council direction, we have expanded the the list of uses that could actually occur within those ground floors um to make that a more attractive development option for developers. And we've also uh recently extended the M F T E program uh to include East Main. So taking these factors into account, we do expect residential development to be financially feasible. Um, but there is that misconception that we're just not seeing playing out right now. Uh, and to put a a note on the stakeholder request, and as mentioned earlier, there would be some additional review and process time to accommodate this request um as it was not previously studied in the environmental analysis. And uh there is also a a value associated with the stakeholder request or an increase in value. The maximum building height is one hundred and seventy feet taller than what was currently studied under the economic analysis. Next slide, please. So the top image, um, we see that the maximum building height uh is about one hundred and seventy feet taller than the buildings north of Main Street in the downtown and are more consistent with the building heights that are found near the downtown core. Um, so north of Northeast Fourth Street. Um, the bottom image again shows the relationship to Surrey Downs and has much taller buildings in close proximity to single-family neighborhoods. Um, this view, uh, it does show the corner of one twelfth and main again. Um, but as you get three hundred feet from Main Street, the building heights change. Um, so it would be the same uh or actually, I believe the maximum that the stakeholders were requesting is ninety feet within fifty feet of one hundred and twelve. And then one hundred and sixty feet uh would be that middle height uh before you get to the taller buildings that are four hundred and twenty feet. Uh, next slide, please. So this image is similar to the wedding cake image that was shared earlier, um, but highlights option A and the stakeholder request of four hundred and twenty feet. Um, we can see that uh from the single-family neighborhood south of Main Street, um, that you would have to travel about fourteen hundred feet um to the north end of uh to the north end of Northeast Fourth Street. So right when you get to the downtown core, um before you transition to tower heights that are in the range of four hundred and twenty feet. Um, so the stakeholder request is showing that um the proposed tower heights would be uh four hundred and twenty feet within about three hundred and fifty feet of those single-family neighborhoods, which is about a quarter of the distance um that that we currently uh have utilized uh for downtown to transition to those lower-density neighborhoods. We've also highlighted the um Sheraton site, which is the Bell Vista Project. Um, that's not a uh image that represents the actual project, but it's to just provide some context. The the maximum building height there is two hundred and fifty feet, um, which is consistent with what the draft Luca is proposing um on that corner just north of the East Main T O D. Um, next slide, please. I'll turn it back to Mike to conclude the staff presentation.
Thanks, Nick. So uh again, this is a summary slide that uh lays out the options that Nick just walked through in some detail. Um, again, uh, the process that Trisna described um for the steps to uh final adoption um is something that we are looking for any feedback from the council on. Um, your agreement on the process and sequence. Uh, if you have concerns about that, please let us know, and we can make necessary adjustments. Uh, and then any feedback on the housing uh and uh height um in these various options would also be helpful as we move forward to the next study session and then uh decisions at the study session following that. So uh Mayor, uh, back to you for any questions or comments from council members.
Okay, thank you very much. It's uh, this is very confusing, made more so by the fact that the developer, uh, the Wigs uh provided uh new information Sunday night to the council, but not to staff. So we're kind of dealing with a different information than staff is, and that's going to uh make this a complicated conversation. Normally, I go last. I'm actually gonna go first 'cause um I'm having a moment of clarity, and then I'm gonna let Councilmember Robertson follow me and iron out whatever I've said. So um in my, first of all, I just wanna say I I like what the Wigs have proposed. You know, I wanna support that development. It's I um but under certain conditions. Having said that, I don't wanna make that a blanket uh ability for all of East Main to develop in the same way. So there are some things that I think go into the land use code and some things that I think go into a development agreement that's specific to this development. And I'll tell you what I think those are. So um I think you should have a base building heights. And whether it's two fifty or three hundred, I don't know, but something uh that you can in a development agreement bargain up for with incentives. And so I'm okay with the Wigs uh four hundred as long as certain things go with that. And I think you should have a base effect F A R maybe five. Uh, but in the development agreement, you can increase that under certain conditions. In the land use code, I think you should have a minimum housing requirement in T O D. And I don't know that we know what that is yet. I understand the chamber has hired a consultant Eco Northwest, who's gonna be working on a recommendation, and I'm looking forward to see what they recommend and have staff review that. Also, in the land use code, I think there should be a requirement for affordable housing at eighty percent A M I or lower. And I think that with heights, as the Wigs have proposed this ninety-foot limit close to the neighborhood, there should be limited height within a certain distance from a single-family neighborhood. They say fifty uh feet from the street. I don't know what the measurement is from the single-family neighborhood, actually. But I think we should respect that. And I think affordable housing should be the first seventy five percent of a public amenity. I think I, I think I covered everything. So those are my thoughts. So I'm gonna hand it over uh unless staff wants to comment on what I said.
I don't, I don't know that we have comments. I think you're clear. You're you're touching on the variables um that were included in the options, and I I think that feedback is helpful.
Okay, so um I'll go to Councilmember Robertson next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I find myself um very much in agreement with you. Um, I think the thing that we need to consider is, yes, we need a lot more housing and we need a lot more affordable housing. So we need more market rate, we need more housing. We have these growth um goals that we agreed to take, and we need to, you know, take the steps and be bold um in order to make them. So the trick is to shape the land use code so that we'll not just get the housing, but get the housing sooner. Because what happened in Belred, we um worked with the amenity system um and it maybe wasn't quite right, but then after ten years of valuation of the land going up, it it became right size. And so now we're seeing a boom in Belred. So I would like to make, try to make every effort to right-size the amenity system and land use code for East Main now, because light rail's opening in less than two years. So I'd like to see this happen sooner so that we don't have to wait till the land value's enough to start getting the development we want. So I'll just say that as a kind of an overarching um comment. So and as as we all know, um, it's really hard to deliver housing, especially affordable housing in a high-rise uh heavy gauge steel construction. Did not impossible, but but difficult. So if we want to make sure that we can get the housing we want sooner, making sure that we can go up to the larger floor plate, twenty-six thousand or more, and ninety feet in height near one twelve, I think is gonna be a really important component. I like the idea of having varying heights across the um site. And I'll wanna get information from staff as we move along through this process, what the varying heights will do in terms of being able to max the F A R. Because it doesn't matter what the heights are if you can't um max the F A R, if the F A R is not right or if the heights are wrong so that you can't get the max F A R. I agree with you, Mayor. Um, I think that um looking at a height at three hundred, you know, with the three twenty mechanical and a D A for four hundred. Um, I was interested in the four hundred-foot height, but I want to pass this this year. So putting the four hundred-foot height into a development agreement path for additional incentives, I think is or additional public amenities good. The best A, the base F A R at five, but going up to maybe six um with a D A, I think is also good. Um, the housing minimum, the the Wigs' new proposal is a twenty percent required um minimum uh which is different than the eight percent. I think that's probably more right-sized. I wanna make sure that the housing minimum is enough. Um, but it's not so much that we don't see it happen, right? Because you can build a high-rise office, but and then you have all this square footage and the thirty-five percent of that, you just don't maybe have enough land to do um the housing. So I think that's really gonna be important. I'm looking forward to the, I really appreciate the chamber stepping up to do that work um from Echo Northwest. Um, I do think that we should have incentives for affordable housing at eighty percent with maybe a hundred percent for owner occupied. Um, and um those incentives need to be, need to be aggressive um so that people will use the incentive and use M F T E so that we can get even more affordable housing. Uh, whether that's seventy-five percent of the incentive system or if it's the tier one, you unlock the first tier before you do unlock the second tier like we did in Belred. I'm not sure. It's gonna take more information for me to know exactly what that percentage is. But there are other amenities I would really like to see on this site, like the overcrossing to the um light rail station, like open space, maybe even childcare. We talked about that last session, how important it is that we have childcare available for our workers and um residents. So and like I said, the the ninety-foot near the neighbor, uh ninety-foot high near one twelfth with the larger floor plates, I think is gonna get us more housing. I think that that would be good. Um, I'd like to have information from staff about what the distance from the street should be. Um, there was a shadow study that the applicant did that I thought was very interesting. I think making sure that we're not shadowing um Surrey Downs is gonna be important, and you know, that there's light and air coming through. Um, so I think I touched on everything that you touched on there. Um, and I'll just hold it there. I'm looking forward to this discussion and getting through this and finishing it this year.
Councilmember Stokes. Followed by the Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I really appreciate the uh the presentation and and the way you've broken it up in terms of approaching these. And this one is, this one is really, to me, the one of the most important. And as I've said earlier, um, I'm willing to um what is really important. The other things that we're talking about doing is what we do in regular buildings. We build these things all the time like this. And the important thing is uh remembering, we're in a situation, and I think the the mayor uh really covered this, that uh we have to move quickly and and Councilmember Robertson also uh uh same thing. You know, I think back again, I when we did the downtown livability, that was a different world. Um, and the wedding cake is, I've always felt we're going towards a sheet cake, and uh the wedding cake seems to be a very, well, that's back in the last century. So I think what we're looking at is twenty twenty-one and going forward is nothing like twenty seventeen, and we should acknowledge that and and move on this. And I think we're getting a lot of really good uh feedback and work on from both uh staff and uh and the Wigs on this, and I think we seem to be coming together. Um, I do understand, uh, and I've seen it in the Puget Sound Business Journal, that the um, what's it now called? The the Bell Vista, uh, they're putting in for uh two four hundred-foot towers there. Uh, and I, I don't know that keeping it lower in that area is gonna be a a big problem in the long run because it is changing. Uh, remember, we were fighting over whether we should have more than three, three uh one time. So what I'm seeing is, I think that we've worked through this, probably taken twice as long as we should have, but we're getting to a point now in this current uh situation where the the uh, all of these things come, need to come to balance, and we need affordable housing. T O D is prime. Affordable housing is prime, and uh if we can get something that is in that range of the thousand or over um affordable housing and get a substantial amount of um uh, you know, really low uh income pieces in that, but um I think the amenities will be good. I, you know, to me, I'm not quite sure that once you get past three hundred and three hundred and twenty feet, adding on a little bit more is gonna make a huge difference and uh overall visually. So if it is something that actually does uh make a difference, and we have to kind of take it on faith that this is is what is the reality, then I think um, I think we're making a lot of progress. But um, we do have to have that affordable housing, and I I appreciate the fact that we, and mentioned before, um, one of the things we have to do is have that now and not put off later 'cause the need is now. It's T O D. We're gonna be needing it. The train's coming. And I think the train and the whole area down there is gonna change dramatically. And frankly, when we get across the street, uh, across the freeway, uh, we're in a different city now. So I think we have to think that way. Um, and I think we have a staff who is is doing that, is capable, you know, very, very highly capable of leading us there and helping us get there. So uh, I'm, I'm pleased with the what staff is presenting and and the way that uh and what the Wigs have come up with, and I see a lot of ways we can push this all together and make it work. In a way that will uh hopefully speed up the process, speed up the development and get our housing and all the other great things this this property is gonna bring. And I like the uh things that Councilmember Robertson, I was mentioning, there's other assets to it. And finally, 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 get the Wigs to a point where they can build instead of making dozens of plans for it uh and build in a way that is really productive and um will uh be something we'll be proud of in the long run. And this has been a tremendous uh thing going back and forth. And again, I really appreciate the staff's work on this, the guidance and the the um perseverance and
Okay, uh Deputy Mayor.
Um, first of all, um, a great presentation by 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 staff. And what I love most about is I'm feeling hopeful that we're gonna uh be able to uh come to a conclusion on December sixth. So um, I really appreciate all the comments by my colleagues before this. Uh, I I think that uh we are headed down a a similar path, and Mayor, I appreciate you kind of kicking off this conversation in in the right way. And I also appreciate Mac, your comments about what really stands out for me, and I think stands out for the majority of this council is that we have that imbalance, that jobs, housing imbalance. And as as much as, you know, I think Councilmember Stokes pointed out, that the wedding cake was, you know, kind of that 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 design. At first, we are in a different place right now, and we have to acknowledge that. And this is the place around T O D areas where we need to look at the density and the housing. And uh because of that, um, I think that uh we're, we're hearing the right things. I think somewhere And uh because of that, um I think that uh we're we're hearing the right things. I think similar things in terms of the base height of about three hundred, three-twenty with the mechanical. Um I I like the idea of the of the DA as well, although we'll have to um have staff come back in terms of what's in that DA, and that'll probably have to be ironed out. Uh but uh certainly, I think that's 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 a good approach. The the base far of five or six seems to make sense to me. Um you know, the requirements and the affordable housing, I think we're all very clear on that in terms of the importance of that and the eighty percent of the uh incentives for that uh affordable housing. I agree, the incentives should be um expanded a bit. You know, certainly if we have that pedestrian overpass uh from the light rail station over uh to this uh facility, I think that should be an incentive um for for sure. And I really appreciate Councilman Robertson mentioning the childcare. Now, this is another crucial issue for this city. Um when uh folks cannot get back to work because there are simply no childcare facilities available, or they simply just can't afford it. So the more options they have for that, that we can build into that, I think that it's crucial. I'd also love to see an incentive for the arts as well as 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 part of this. And um uh also appreciate the the chamber weighing, you know, this uh in- important development. And I look forward to seeing that um that Eco Northwest report as well. Um and I'm not sure if we have um a timeline on that. Uh Mike or Mac, I don't believe I saw it in the letter from the chamber what the timeline was, but certainly would like that uh uh to come back to us and and see what that uh report uh contains in terms of might shift any of our any of our thinking. But uh yeah, we're 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 getting there. I I like this uh this approach, this conversation. And again, great presentation. And I look forward to hearing from my other colleagues.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, if I could just jump in and answer that question, um I'm not sure of the status of any alternate analysis. Um but I would note for the council that Eco Northwest provided all of the analysis that's contained in your library and all the conclusions that our staff were referencing earlier. So you can reference all of that work uh in the interim time period a- as we're continuing to work through this.
Thanks, Matt.
Councilmember Barksdale, followed by Councilmember Lee.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um not much to add here. Just want to sort of um emphasize just a couple of things. One, um definitely the importance of making sure that we have the affordable housing and prioritizing that. Um and I think having the uh what you proposed still aligns with the intent of the um from the vision, where you know, the 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 larger buildings are closest to the highway. It helps to also block some of the noise from the highway um for the neighborhood and the smaller buildings closer to one hundred and twelve um that that are closer to the neighborhood. Um and then in terms of the amenities, I I know arcs, uh if you may mention the arcs, I think even more broadly, if we could think about inclusive amenities, and what I mean by that is amenities that encourage people to interact. So not just merely coexist. So if we can start to think about that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmembers on.
Yeah, I appreciate the the staff had put the schedule deadline that we will have a hopefully a conclusion by December, or at least, you know, getting to where we want to go. So, good. I hope we can keep to that schedule. Uh my question is, I have some questions about housing. You showed uh affordable housing, uh whatever housing, and if it's whatever height uh permitted, you know, two, three hundred to two uh three, two, three-twenty, and then uh four, three hundred to three, four hundred and four-twenty. I'm a little confused. What what the units are we talking about? And maybe I need the explanation. I would, I don't know. Yeah, so maybe uh I would imagine if you have more units available, more heights, uh you should have more units available, but somehow it doesn't. So I would love to understand that better. Uh the bottom line is, however, I think the pro- the developer has a certain proposal. They have a certain preference based on the economic conditions, and they have not deviated from that. So I'm not sure what is the economic benefit or feasibility. The key is really economic feasibility. Uh we can do whatever we want as council members, tell them what to do. The city can tell them what to do. But if it's not economically feasible, we can order good ideas and good thinking and good goals, and it won't happen. Uh you know, starting with number one, if it doesn't work economically, they won't have a project. So just wasting the time to talk. And uh if it will, if we do, they do it for some reason, and it's not going to come out, and they're not going to do it either. So I would want to know more. Uh you know, this is the first time we talk about this, first time we uh we have not heard from the developer. I heard at the beginning is that they still would love to have four hundred to four hundred and twenty feet. And so I would like to hear from them and what is their uh thinking and how they can uh able to make this work. And uh I I like the idea that kind of made us at it. Uh we may be able to give them certain underlooker and maybe certain heights to meet their uh ma- made their feasibility if we can do it in some of the agreement. How do we get there? I don't care. The key is we should be able to allow them, give them the ability to make it economically feasible. And that's my whole interest. So I like to understand better, why is the housing piece uh not workable if the height is going up? I would even, so I need to know that. Two, I like to know what's the developers thinking about. And if they can uh accommodate, you know, whatever we may come up with the idea of making the height possible and maybe different way to get there, that's fine. Uh so I I would like to have that kind of conversation, understanding uh between the developers and the city staff. And finally, I want to thank the chamber and also the mayor for taking the time, stepping into this and working with their input. Because that's important. But importantly, most of it is everyone understands where it's coming from and make sure it's feasible. It can be done for the developer themselves. Otherwise, it's all talk. Thank you.
Do you uh want to answer some of his questions today or come back and talk about it next next time?
I think what would be helpful is um it's a calibration question regarding housing and height. Um that is um kind of fe- feeds into the next serving around FAR uh in the calibration of the incentive system. So it might be best to try to capture Councilmember Lee's questions uh in a little more detail when we come back. I think it'll fit well uh into that presentation.
Okay, uh Councilmember Zon.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, it's like a big jigsaw puzzle where we know what the picture is we want to paint. And yet, all the pieces haven't quite fit together yet. So I appreciate all the due diligence of staff working with the WIGs and the chamber and to try to thread a needle through this code so that we can get that vibrant mixed-use neighborhood that we've talked about of how we make sure that the code um allows for development to happen and as quickly as possible. So as I was thinking about that, I guess we keep talking about the fact that we want it all, right? That both from the short-term standpoint as well as the longer term. So when I think about that, what I believe I've been reading and hearing is that if we are able to to build at the eighty-five-foot level along one-twelve, that perhaps then housing and affordable housing could be built a little sooner. But if we are relying on three-hundred-foot buildings for affordable housing, that that financial picture isn't quite ready yet. I believe that's what I'm hearing. And so as we try to thread the needle, my question would be, has the options been vetted to try to look at both of those in together? And and then looking at the outcome focused of the because when I look at option B, right, uh what was it, eleven hundred units of housing? Absolutely, we want that. And yet, what I'm also hearing from the development stand developers is that to try to get the first seventy-five percent to have that doesn't appear to be realistic based on what the market's able to do. So I guess my question to staff is, is there anything else you can look at that tries to thread that needle? Is that the allowing a DA to get to higher heights and perhaps floor plates so that we can thread that needle? So that's one of my questions. And then the other one, as I think about it, is um when I read the information from the WIGs, they also talked about the potential for condos affordable. And if we could get condos and also potentially affordable condos, then that's another piece that we really haven't talked about. We've only talked about rentals. But we know that we are missing homeownership units as well. So if there's a way to look at that on this um development, that would be amazing. Um and I would say the other one that I've been thinking about is that, you know, and you said this in the in the memo, that these topics are really interrelated. So while I agree that we take these in chunks, there's a part of me that says, well, if later on we are going to talk about fee and lieu, well, there's a part of me that says we want to be building the housing here. So what would that fee and lieu discussion look like? And do we need to look at them together? And there may be other pieces that, when I read ahead and in the packet, we may actually want to look at in totality because I my sense is that they are not necessarily mutually exclusive. So as we move forward, I guess that would be my my preference. Related though to the height question, I am, I support the three hundred, three-twenty feet plus the ability through a DA to be able to uh consider up to four hundred, four-twenty to get the kind of um housing and affordable housing that we really want on this property. So those were my my thoughts. And I support the fact that we're trying to move quickly to try to get to a decision on this whole thing by the end of the year. My only comment related to that is, you know, we've already been going at this for quite a while. So if we just need to make sure that we have accounted for this versus just trying to shoehorn everything and and missing a couple of opportunities. So thank you very much.
On the questions, um I don't know if there's anyone on the team regarding the the economic pieces that Councilmember Zon was speaking to or uh the preference to come back as a package with regard to those elements um as the package uh evolves.
Uh yeah, Mike, I think maybe I'll just make a few comments. I do think it would be good. FAR, particularly base FAR and its relationship to the incentive system and how that translates into the provision of housing and more importantly, affordable housing, those things are intrinsically linked. So those components, I think, absolutely better to to try to weave into one presentation. I think the question of overall height and whether or not it makes sense to build a building at two hundred and thirty feet, I think that question has somewhat been asked and answered. The market is delivering those two hundred, two hundred and fifty-foot tall buildings in the city right now. Uh the question of overall height is a value question. And um I think as I'm hearing the council talk, I think you're all comfortable with uh a deviation from some of the wedding cake ideology that had been discussed as sort of a you know, a North Star through the years. And so as you're comfortable with that value judgment, we can help you with, you know, what the right metrics ought to be. Uh there's a big difference in building value between a seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five-foot-tall building and a two hundred and thirty to three hundred-foot-tall building. So we're seeing those buildings be built now. Um it really is a question of how much of that uh extra value do you want to retain for the public benefit? In other words, how much uh housing do you want to require? Because the economics are going to make sense when you go from a a five-story building to a twenty-plus-story building. And a lot of that has to do with land value um and expected rates of return. But those buildings are actually being built now throughout the city, where we allow them that big.
Okay, so um I'm just going to clarify a comment that um that that I I actually am all for the wedding cake uh in the downtown. This is not the downtown. And uh we don't require the affordable hi- housing requirements that we are requiring of this property. So that is why I'm okay with deviating from the wedding cake and allowing increased height because we're asking for increased affordable housing. And that's the difference. So I just wanted to clarify that. Are there any more comments or questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. Um I just wanted to agree with you. I, to me, the wedding cake concept for this parcel is more of a half-wedding cake with the low, lower buildings at ninety feet, near one-twelve, but it getting higher, not towards the center of downtown, but towards four oh five. Because if, one, it's in a hole, so it's, it will seem less tall than they are because it's downhill from everything. And two, because it backs up to the freeway. It'll provide um potentially noise mitigation. And it's not, you know, no, I I, to me, that's where I'd like to see the um height graduation is ninety feet near one-twelve, taller towards the back. So I I do hope that when this comes back, that we do have a range of heights uh for the par- property. Because I think that just setting one height across the board is not really the right move. Um anyway, but I I'm looking forward to this coming back. And then um I would just comment on, I I do support um potentially different standards on AMI for ownership units. But I'm not sure if we should mandate whether ownership units are built or whether rentals are built. I just think that it's appropriate to have a different AMI if we're going to have an affordable um ownership at a hundred percent because it's it's just, that's just a more of a right sizing sort of thing. So um I think I've weighed in on everything, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Since we brought up the wedding cake idea, I I thought that the wedding cake made downtown the way it is. It's all the same height to get to the main street, the 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 boundary of the downtown area. That's why it looks very restrictive. Everybody tried to build the the same same height um without losing the value. Uh so I thought maybe the the last few years, we have been allowing building to go higher, which is actually, you know, the process to adjusting to the idea of not having wedding cake restriction. And so that as a result, we're we're not going to have all just the same height buildings. We're going to have a variety of it. And so I I kind of think that that's where we're going. So I'm not quite clear exactly sure what you mean now, we still have the wedding cake idea. So so maybe I need some explanation on that.
I may have confused you by bringing it up, but um that it is for the downtown, the central business district and not for
But the staff bought it earlier also. That's a result, the reason for just to find some of the height discussions and so on.
All right, well, we can have staff. Councilmember Stokes.
You know, I mean, just just to wrap it up on that, I mean, the a wedding cake downtown and then having another thing over here is, it it, I don't know, the wedding cake means that outside downtown is low-rise. It is, but those wedding cakes are probably, I don't, I've never seen one of those in the last twenty years. So it's it's, we're we're using a construct that really isn't very helpful in the way this city has developed. As we're talking wedding cake was when everything was downtown and it was smart to do that. But we're changing in that. So if we can kind of talk about what's needed in this area, and I suspect uh you know, out in Belred, they're going to look at this and they're already thinking, why didn't we get higher heights out there? So it'll happen. I mean, when you look at any city that's spread all over the world, they don't concentrate everything right here. It spreads out. And that's what we're doing. And it's how do we do it intelligently is is the issue, not having a a construct that refines things and keeps us in a in a box. That's all I'm saying, is we look at it more fluidly than than that.
Thank you.
But I think this has been great.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so I think I hope the staff that you've heard um some clear um in uh guidance as to what we want to see next time we meet. Do you have any questions of us?
Um I don't know that I have questions. I'll let others speak up as well. I I think that the feedback uh direction, I think, from the council has been very helpful. It is starting to narrow down the options that the council wants to advance. So that's what this discussion was intended to accomplish this evening. And so certainly appreciate all the feedback and um and direction that the council's been providing here. So um I don't have any questions specific to the information provided. Uh other members of the team, if you do, go ahead and unmute and speak up.
I see Councilmember Robertson.
I I just I just have a question because I'm a little confused about the discussion about there being all this high rise affordable housing. And my understanding is is that there's only one high rise in the city that's, you know, heavy gauge steel, that's affordable housing, and that was done with M F T E. So um to me, it seems like we need to make sure that we right size the affordable housing incentive um as well as look at how we can use it by leveraging M F T E to get what we need. Um but I want to make sure that we are allowing for enough density and height so that the mid-rise housing, which is a lot more affordable to build and we can get delivered a lot sooner, will be incentivized as well. Because as you said, Mayor, the downtown, we don't have any required mandatory housing um or affordable housing in the high rises. And so we want to make sure that it's it pencils for the developer and that it also pencils in the short term. So we get the housing. So if staff wants to weigh in on that or just make sure if you're bringing back examples, I'd like to see how we achieved um the both the housing and the affordable housing by construction type, whether it's through M F T E or through incentive, because we need stuff that actually works. So and if you have, you can talk, address it tonight, that's great. But otherwise, when this comes back for a decision uh in two more study sessions, that would be really helpful.
Mayor, I think I I may have a question just to make sure I'm clear when we come back for you all. There was some discussion about exceeding the maximum FAR that has been studied in any of the work thus far. Uh and I want to make sure I'm clear. Some of you have asked for development agreement ideas that would allow for ma- exceeding maximums that have been studied, for example, height. Is the idea to consider more FAR under certain circumstances for, for example, more affordable housing? Or is the idea to go back and re-study the overall max FAR and just simply allow six point O?
Yeah, I mean, actually, there's three things. There's one, seeing it in the development agreement. Um well, I I mean, that's what I would recommend is uh having a base F A R that is five uh point O and then being able to bargain for a larger F A R. Uh and we need to decide what what to bargain with. So um hopefully it's affordable housing, but it could be something else. But I think council member Robertson and others agreed with that. So.
Okay.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I just, uh thank you, Mayor. Um so Mac, to your question, my my understanding is is that the maximum height that's been studied under CIPA is three twenty and the maximum FAR that's been studied under CIPA is five point six FAR. So from my perspective, as someone who wants to adopt this this year, I don't want to go back unless you can do the CIPA in the next month and a half. I don't want to go back and do it. Um I but uh with the knowledge that if we allow flex in the DA, I assume that based on work I've done drafting DAs, that you would do CIPA on the DA at the time that is done. So that will be my direction on that would be, let's let's allow some flex there um knowing that CIPA would be done later if it goes be above the three twenty height and five point six FAR. If that makes, does that make sense, Mac?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, that that's my thought. I don't know if the rest of the council has that.
No, I think that's cool system. All right. Thank you for the clarification. All right, we're going to take a break. It is uh eight, about eight fifteen, so we'll rejoin at eight twenty five. We have a quorum. The uh last thing is the annual update of our development services activities. Deputy Deputy City Manager, would you like to introduce that further?
Yes, thank you. A timely conversation in light of the other items on the agenda tonight. Uh we have staff here to talk about development activity in Bellevue, which continues at a high level um with continued strong interest in both office and residential development. Um tonight, we'll get more information about a look back at the first half of twenty twenty one, a snapshot of things that are currently under review and under development and a look ahead of what we anticipate over the next year, year and a half with new projects. Um but Development Services was last in front of you with an update of this nature earlier this year in January. Um I'm going to hand it off to Mike Brennan to do an introduction and he is joined tonight by Liz Stead, our Land Use Director, and Jay Kesselgeser, our Business Services Director. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Ms. Baron. Good evening again, uh Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newhouse and council members. Um as Ms. Baron says uh or mentioned, we are back again uh this year to give you an update on uh development activity across the uh city. Um it is, uh as you know, uh a very busy time in the growth of the city. Um we are experiencing a development cycle that has been at a fairly high level, at a peak level for almost eight years now, which is really beyond anything that uh we have experienced uh in the history of the city and and in my career with the city, and it has offered a number of uh opportunities and challenges for the city. So we want to give you a little bit of background on the development activity that's currently underway, things under construction uh in the pipeline, uh give you a flavor for the nature of those projects. We'll say a few things about the challenges that this uh level of activity really presents to to us um as we try to manage our way uh through the um really particularly in the downtown in the Belred area, um the construction activity and the logistics and coordination necessary to make that all work. Give you some information on the forecast and the volume of activity uh that is in the pipeline. And then a little bit about, um we also like to share the customer feedback. We have ongoing customer surveys. Uh and we're always focused on continuous improvement, even during these very active times uh to ensure our programs continue to um align with the the changing customer needs. Next slide. So Liz Stead is going to uh provide some background on some of the major project activities that are underway or in the pipeline in both the Belred and the downtown, Liz. I think you may be muted if you're.
Good evening. Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newhouse and council members. I appreciate you inviting us in tonight to speak more about the incredible development activity that we're seeing and the projects that have come out of that. The development's being concentrated on our planned growth corridors and is taking advantage of the proximity to light rail and bus transit lanes. Some of the um the trend is playing out in the Spring District in Belred where we see continued investment by Facebook, taking the three office buildings that you see on your screen, block sixteen twenty four and what was formerly the REI headquarters. The Spring District is a transit oriented development with light rail station, which will maximize the benefits supported by the mix of commercial development and transit. One of the other Spring District Belred projects that was very interesting is Aegis at Overlake, so a project with assisted living. So we're providing that for all different stages of life for our community. Some of the projects that are under construction today are around housing. We're seeing a real diversity of housing types in Belred that are being constructed. And those are also especially in locations that are served by transit. Two types of development that we're seeing are mixed use, mid-rise projects along with more townhomes, providing for a strong mixture of residential housing types to fill the different needs of our community. The Northup Way Mixed Use Project, which is on the top, is actually helping to fill the need for affordable housing as well. And by providing eighty one affordable units, approximately twenty percent of the four hundred and two unit total. Some of the major projects in Belred that continue that are close to the Bellevue um station is the one thirtieth, I'm sorry, the Bellevue Station Project, which is close to the one thirtieth Avenue Light Rail Station. And we're also seeing some townhomes. So again, that diversity of different residential types is really being filled with the Belred construction. Moving to downtown, another one of our real targeted areas. Uh the downtown, after the adoption of the code that was created through the downtown livability process in twenty seventeen, we started to see some of the projects that you see on our screen. So these projects are all located in the downtown and they are adding to the interesting skyline and high design standards that we've worked to maintain in the city. The project on your right, Brio Apartments, is a residential unit project along with one eighty eight and Bellevue Tower. Those are all some of the examples of residential projects that we have in the downtown. Under construction, we have some other projects. We're also seeing the assisted living in downtown as well as in Belred. We looked at that in the previous slides. We have two projects in the downtown right now that I just wanted to briefly talk about. The Holden Assisted Living Project, that does provide a hundred thirty six units of assisted living for people who would choose to live downtown in a downtown environment. Um we are seeing quite a few residential projects, but the amount of commercial development has created a very strong development cycle that is also bringing the residential. Moving to the commercial, here are some of the projects that are under construction. There are just a few representational projects of the many office developments that are in under construction and in review. These two projects alone add almost one point five million square feet of office space to the downtown. These are some of the first projects that have gone to construction utilizing the additional height that was unlocked through the downtown livability code amendment. Both of these projects are six hundred feet in height and have created some lovely open space areas as required by the code to mitigate for some of the intensity of this development. The two projects that you're looking at, the six hundred Bellevue project that is phase one, there is a second tower that will be coming along in the future. Then the one thousand and one office towers is a two story or a two tower development. Also under construction, we continue with this office development boom. Um in this, of these two projects that are depicted on the screen have another two million square feet of added office development just through these two projects. So the five five five, one hundred and eighth Office Tower Project, cited on the Grand Connection as well, and has worked with staff to take into account the recently passed design guidelines the council approved to create some of the new links around the corridor. So I think that's one of the exciting things going on as we start to build out that corridor. Uh the West Main Bellevue Plaza Project is actually three office towers in one construction site. So it it's quite a large uh concrete pour when you get to that scale of development. Lastly, in case you were concerned at all, the development was ending or slowing down with all the projects that are under construction, we still have a lot that are on the boards. So we have a very robust pipeline of projects coming in. The Artes, which is showing on the left, has just started construction. So very recently, they're uh digging a big hole right now and kind of getting started there. But the other projects, which are also office, are all close to construction, but they're still under review with the S D staff. Um the next two slides show more developments that make up a mix of different project types and different areas of the city. And they are residential and office. They include some of the larger projects, such as the one on your left, the Bills of Park Row Project, which is twenty one stories of residential and that is located adjacent to the downtown park. So that's going to be a really exciting place for someone to be able to live. Um some of the other projects that we see on the next slide is Pinnacle Project, which is on your left right there. The Pinnacle Project is up in the northwest portion of the downtown and Pinnacle North and Pinnacle South. That is the area where the old QFC is located and some other projects. So those are two whole city blocks that are being redeveloped in that northwest corner. And then lastly, I will leave you with the Cloudview Project, which is three six hundred foot tall towers, which is pretty exciting. And that one, it has two office towers and one residential hotel. And again, that was one of those where we really worked with the applicants to create a gracious space of the ground floor to take advantage of the open space that was provided by the code that was passed through downtown mobility. So I'll pass this off to Mike Brennan now to discuss some of the challenges the department has faced this year.
Thanks, Liz. So with all of that's going on um in the city with regard to your construction and development, it doesn't come um without challenges. Uh as you might guess, if you have walked around in the downtown or out in the Belred, um you've probably experienced some of the inconveniences uh that um it that it causes. Some of it is mi- can be mitigated, but uh clearly that does create some inconvenience uh for the public and um visitors in the city. So uh some of the things that we do do to um truly try to mitigate some of those inconveniences is our staff, uh particularly the rider rate, wider right of way um use um inspection staff are regularly meeting with the contractors in the downtown in in Belred. They meet weekly with the downtown contractors to coordinate their activities to ensure that they are not uh overburdening the system, so to speak, or where they create conflicts with the way they are uh using the right of way, um or if they have major deliveries of either concrete uh or other materials, uh they work together and through that coordination with our city inspection staff to minimize those impacts. We are regularly uh publishing uh information to allow for the public to understand the the challenges that they may face. Um some of the things that they that we do do is um provide information in the building Bellevue map that lists all the major projects. Uh the uh graphic in the lower right corner of the slide uh shows that. It is uh an opportunity for the public to um really click on a dot and and learn a little bit more about each of those projects. We do pro- uh publish the major projects list with, that you may have seen before. It shows some of the graphics that you um just saw in the presentation that Liz provided on the major projects. Our timelines are readily available on the website uh and are uh uh available for our our applicants, um particularly our developers and uh contractors out there paying attention to those permit timelines and clearly working hard to maintain consistency and predictability in those. Uh but that being said, some of the challenges that we have faced are really maintaining our staffing levels um at a consistent um level during the last year or so, uh just as a result of needing additional staff and having vacant positions and seeing some turnover uh that is typical, but maybe slightly compounded by uh this the pandemic that we've been experiencing over the last year and a half. Um we do also have the open um permit data portal that provides access to a lot of the permit data that we have uh in our system. Uh the public can download that information and manipulate it in the way that they would like to use it. And then uh also provide the weekly permit bulletin that many of you have seen. Uh we recently updated that bulletin to make it more user friendly and readable. Uh and uh we continue to, like I said, uh make minor adjustments and significant improvements to our uh the way we are delivering our services. Next slide, please. So the uh we we do want to share a little bit about the ongoing improvements that we are making, a little bit more kind of more holistic data on this development cycle. I'll hand it over to Jake Hesselgesser to walk through some of that information for you, Jake.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. It's good to be with you this evening. Getting into the volumes and forecast section of our presentation, a theme that you'll notice uh similar to what's what Ms. Stead uh highlighted is that we're seeing another year of robust development activity. The graphic on this first slide highlights that theme as we're on pace to reach a forecast of just over fifteen thousand permits. Getting more into the permit volumes, this chart shows the number of permit applications and issued permits by year with the top line representing applications, the lower line representing issued permits. As you can see, we did experience a dip in volumes due to the construction shutdown at the beginning of the pandemic. However, we did see a quick rebound in those volumes and we are currently on pace to see year end volumes near pre-pandemic levels with five hundred and forty multifamily units, one hundred and twenty three single family units and just under one million square feet of office space sent to construction so far this year. Another recent trend that we've seen this year is an increase in the permit volume for single family remodel and addition projects indicating more investment in existing homes throughout Bellevue. Speaking of level investment, this next slide shows the total construction value associated with issued building permits broken down by year as we move left to right on the chart. The different patterns in the bar include new single family residential and a light blue checkered pattern at the bottom, single family residential remodels and additions and kind of that narrower maroon color, commercial tenant improvements in the dark uh blue pattern and the major projects in the striped pattern near the top. As we reported to council back in January, even with the dip in twenty twenty permit volumes, twenty twenty was really a record year in terms of the level of investment being made across the city as we saw this metric approach one point two billion dollars for the first time. Twenty-twenty-one is also on pace to be another record year with issued building permits totaling over nine hundred million dollars in construction value at this point. And we still have several projects looking to pull their building permits before the end of the year. We do expect this number to climb and likely pass last year's record mark. Next slide please. This next slide shows another metric we watch closely, which is the square footage of major projects that are under construction throughout the city. The bar on the right-hand side shows the total square footage under construction at the end of quarter two of this year, with the other bars representing the year-end total for previous years. The projects included in this metric are all at various stages of construction, from those that may just be breaking ground to those that are nearing certificate of occupancy. What we see here is an increase in that square footage under construction and that signals to us future demands for our inspection services, which we do expect to see as we head into twenty-twenty-two. Next slide please. So with all of the development activity, it's important that we also pay attention to what our customers are saying about their experience. As we've reported to council in the past, Development Services maintains a real-time customer survey that is sent out at various stages in the permitting inspection process. This slide compares, compares pre-pandemic feedback in blue to the feedback we receive during the pink pandemic and orange over three key areas. Overall customer satisfaction on the left, timely responses in the middle, and then how courteous our staff are being on the right-hand side. And the percentages in the chart represent those customers who reported that they were extremely or very satisfied with our services. And as you can see, there's marked improvement in each one of these areas. Next slide please. In addition to the metrics on the previous slide, we also pay attention to themes that may emerge through our survey. One of those themes that we saw over the past year was the desire of some customers, including homeowners and small business owners, to have a more convenient way of meeting with city staff. In response to that feedback, earlier this year, we worked with our Information Technology Department to launch a virtual permit center. And really, the virtual permit center gives customers the ability to schedule an online virtual appointment with city staff to get their general permitting questions answered, very similar to the walk-in services offered at City Hall. This new service not only leverages existing technology available to the city, it also aligns with the changes we've made over many years, which help bring our services to a place that's convenient for our customers. Next slide please. And finally, we just wanted to highlight a few additional continuous improvement items. In February of this year, this, the state of Washington and city of Bellevue adopted new building and fire codes. During the code adoption cycle, this time, staff worked with the International Code Council and the state of Washington to publish a more user-friendly version of the city construction codes, and that can be accessed through the city website. Development Services staff have also been working in partnership with our Information Technology Department and an outside vendor on a multi-year effort to upgrade our permit tracking system. The project will simplify the system architecture, align with the regional mybuildingpermit.com portal and leverage more contemporary software features, all of which leading to efficiency gains for staff and our customers. And to help us prepare to meet a future objective of moving our permit tracking system to the cloud, which will ultimately reduce our ongoing system replacement costs, we will be coming back to council in the future with an amendment to our vendor's contract that will allow us to complete the final stages of this upgrade project. We've also worked on a update to the weekly permit bulletin, which Mr. Brennan mentioned earlier, which provides a more user-friendly format of the weekly permit bulletin and will soon include a more efficient postcard version for notices that go out through the mail. Next slide. And with that, I will hand it back to Mr. Brennan for any closing comments.
Thanks Jake. So just a couple of just quick closing comments. Again, this is a very high-level kind of walkthrough of what's going on with respect to development and development services across the city. We are in a very active period. As you look around town, I know that's no surprise to anybody. We are continuing to work to push information out to the public so that they can stay informed of what's happening either in the roads with development projects and just with the, the status of services that we provide directly to our applicants. So working hard to minimize the number of surprises that people might experience as we continue to navigate our way through this. We are seeing the exciting part about this is we are seeing some very exciting, very high-quality projects under construction in the city and going through the development review process, really aligned with the codes that the, the city council has adopted, that really shaped the form of development that's happening in the city. And the exciting part of that is seeing it come to life and it's actually really happening along the lines of that work that the council has completed. And as Jake mentioned, just note again, we are on a record set of development investment that's happening in the city again for twenty-twenty-one. Really surprising the, the length of period that this development cycle and the level of investment that the city of Bellevue is attracting right now. So a lot of reasons for that. But really it is good city planning, great economic development emphasis that the city provides and great support for the businesses and business community out there. So a lot of, lot of reasons for that, but it is making it all come to life, which is very exciting. So that's it for our presentation. Happy to answer any questions that council members may have.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have, I may have missed it. Do we have an estimate of retail space that's opening and then that's coming available? And then I guess sort of a follow-on question there, you know, we really talk about having mom-and-pop shops. Are we seeing any opportunities for like smaller spaces that are maybe more affordable or anything in that direction and if not? Is there anything we could do?
Jake, I don't know. We didn't have, Councilmember Barksdale, we didn't have any information on new retail space in the presentation this evening. Jake, I don't know if you have it on the tip of your fingers there. If not, we can always follow up and get you that information or get the council that information. And then Liz, on the question about the shape or the size of the spaces, maybe you could respond to that based on what you're seeing in the permit process.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. At this point, we are seeing a lot of larger tenant spaces and we have not been seeing many of the smaller spaces that might support the mom-and-pop. I think it is always a challenge when you have not only new development, but large spaces to break that down and make it economically feasible for those smaller businesses. So it's something that we continue to try and help people get in when they do have an opportunity and we work with them through the permitting process. But we are seeing mainly larger tenant spaces at this point in time. While they are not Home Depot large, they are larger than maybe a small pizza shop may be interested in.
I, I would be interested in the amount of retail space and, and also I don't know if there's, if, how maybe we go about it, but trying to figure out how to maybe encourage smaller retail spaces. I mean, I think people who are working in downtown or in Bellevue and live in Bellevue would appreciate having those mom-and-pop shops. I know we have economic development looking at ways to help, to provide money, but the other side of that is having more affordable spaces as well. Thank you.
Yeah, to Councilmember Barksdale's point, we've talked about how to retain some of these smaller businesses, like along Bellevue Way where you see Garlic Crush and you know that whole area is going to be redeveloped. How do we keep businesses like that in town? And I think we've brought this up before, that it'd be really interesting to hear from staff sometime what kind of changes we could make to encourage support of retaining these businesses if we need to do anything. So, and then providing the number of retail to the council members later. Mike, that'd be great. Thank you. Councilmember Robertson, followed by Councilmember Zon.
Thank you. This is really exciting. I feel like we've been doing connect the dot or drawings for all these years and all of a sudden people got off the erector sets, right? It's starting to come out of the ground, the idea on the paper. So, you know, thanks for the great presentation as always, Mike and Liz and team. Your department must be so tired. So please give their thanks. I know they're working overtime with the number of permits. I know that the job market is very difficult where there's way more jobs than people to fill them. So please convey my and the council's thanks to the staff. We recognize how hard they're working at this. Secondly, it seems almost as if we were somewhat clairvoyant with regard to putting everything on mybuildingpermit.com, not knowing that people will be working remotely in the future. So I just wondered, I have a couple of questions and I'll just ask them and then, and then turn, and then mute myself. One is, how is the remote work going with everything being digital? Are people, I mean, obviously inspectors have to get on the ground and go to the buildings, but the, the plan reviewers, the land use reviewers, et cetera, utilities, engineers that are looking at all that stuff, how's that going? Is it, is it more efficient almost since we got, got digital? And are they able to keep up with working remotely to the extent that they are? And then my other question has to do with the level of affordable housing that we're getting. I, I'm curious if, if the, the department is sharing information with MFT, about MFT with all of any residential project that's coming in. I know council wanted to do that, to do education and outreach on every project as well as to let people know that there's these fifteen ninety money grants that if people wanted to, you know, get some money for some units, that that was a possibility as well. So, remote work and then affordable housing. Thanks.
So I'll need some help with some of these responses, but first of all, thank you for the positive comments regarding the hard work that staff has been really doing for several years now to keep pace. And we'll absolutely pass that along to the entire team. As far as remote work, you're right, we were well positioned to go remote very quickly. We had invested a lot in advancing our systems to allow for us to begin working in entirely digital form before the pandemic even hit. Got to a hundred percent paper was permitting about a year, year and a half, I think before. So when, when we did have to go and move people to remote work, we were able, able, able to do that very, very quickly and seamlessly, really very little hiccup for our customers. So something we were all very proud of. As far as the continuation of remote work, we are all still experiencing what's this future going to look like in a more hybrid work environment, just like the private sector. So we are still going with the ebbs and flows with the pandemic and dealing with the, all the challenges that come with not only managing a development boom, but managing, you know, managing it through the middle of the pandemic. So I would say we are doing well, but it is, it causes some fatigue, to be honest with you. I think we're doing well. On the affordable housing, Liz, I'm gonna ask for your help on information that we're providing and how we'll work with community development on that front.
Be happy to, thank you. That's a great question because it's something that obviously we're really trying to get the word out and trying to support community development with the MFT program. So on all of our pre-application meetings for residential projects, we actually have invited representatives from community development to join us in Development Services and explain the program to the applicants at that time. We are also providing information when we have a pre-Development Services application where someone's just coming in and asking some questions. We're actually reading, reaching out to community development at that point as well, say, hey, you might want to hook up with this person and, you know, give them a little, some information. So we're finding, I think we're successfully getting the information out at this point. It's something that, you know, I know all staff is very supportive of and is trying to push forward. We generally do it through the pre-app and the DC service.
Thank you. Are, are you getting more takers? Do you know?
We do have some in the pipeline. I actually was just pulling up a spreadsheet that I had that kind of talked about that. So we do have some, a couple of projects right now that we don't. I know one is looking at twenty-eight MFT units. Another one is Pinnacle, the Pinnacle Projects I was talking about are discussing MFT moments, but we do not have a number of units yet on that. So they're pretty, pretty early days. So we've got a couple on the boards right now and, you know, I think we'll continue to see more and more as it becomes more prevalent. One thing to remember, a lot of these decisions get made somewhat later with MFT because they can enter into those agreements at a later date. So sometimes they, they come in under the wire.
Good point. Thank you for the update. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Zon, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Yes, I want to thank you, Mike, Liz and Jake as well. I feel like, you know, while we were teleworking, staff were really busy out in the field and making sure that you're supporting all these projects that are going. And I can appreciate the staff turnover. It's a tight market for hiring. So I did have a couple of questions from the standpoint of tools that we might have for our staff to be able to, you know, do virtual inspections with the glasses where they can send messages back to the office or drone inspections, whether we've considered those kinds of tools so that as they're trying to field all of the work that they've got. And then just as I'm also thinking about the building Bellevue map, it, it shows all the projects. I'm wondering though, from the, the folks that have to live with deliveries and street closures, whether there's another transportation map that it can be over-layered over that to help people communicate the kind of impacts that we might have. I'm with Councilmember Robertson. I'd like to understand more about the MFT and, and what we might be seeing with all these projects. Because I feel like just in the last year, we're seeing a lot more. So maybe that next affordable housing update, we will see information about that. I agree with Councilmember Barksdale. Is there some things we could do in partnership with the chamber or economic development for being able to build out some incubator retail spaces for the small mom-and-pop? Whether that's possible, what are we seeing in terms of innovations with the new energy code and sustainability and what these different developers might be doing related to that? Are we, as we look at the, the high-rises, are they building in things that will help with waste and garbage and recycling? And it actually also made me think about, especially in downtown, the curb management study that we had embarked on and how we're doing in terms of curb management, whether there's some opportunities for, you know, shared spaces so that we can better maximize the, the space we have around these buildings to support all the things we're trying to do. So just, just a lot of things that's brought to mind as I think about just the level of development that we have there. So thank you so much for your work and, and I would also want to understand if we need to provide some additional temporary staff to work through the hump of, of the workload. We would certainly would want to hear about that as well. So you can respond here or we can, you can send me a message about some of the questions that I have.
We can touch on just a few things. That's a long list. So maybe we'll hit a few highlights and absolutely always available to discuss what's going on with Development Services and Innovation. But maybe real quickly, Jake, on just the innovation side, the kind of looking ahead at how we continue to try to advance the way we're delivering our services.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmembers Zon. We're constantly forward-looking in terms of the use of technology and how that plays into the work that we do. Kind of cycling back on that same thing that Councilmember Robertson brought up earlier. I think we've seen a lot of efficiencies with paperless permitting review where you can look at set of drawings with five, six different people that are remote, maybe not even in the, in the same region, for example. So our inspection staff as well as our review staff, they, they do that quite often, as well as with major commercial developers. I don't think we've gone down the route yet of looking at drones for inspections. We have had discussions about virtual inspections. I know staff have tested out a few of the different tools and how those things might work for us in the future. So always something that we're focused on, how technology can support our work. We've made large investments in technology to do that into the future and I think we'll continue to, to look at how that will support our work in the future.
And then just real quick comments on the, comments related or questions related to, you know, the economic development side and are we, you know, taking advantage of the opportunities? And certainly we stay in close touch with our economic development team and Matt Cummins Department. And hearing the feedback that we're getting from the business community and others, some of those spin out into, you know, code amendments, particularly we saw some things we moved through quickly during the pandemic in response. But even to the question about the types of spaces that are becoming available and how do we, you know, maximize the benefit of um, you know, maximize the benefit of of the development that's happening and then providing uh, easy opportunity for people to occupy those spaces. Again, it has been a challenge to ground floor retail spaces, as I think we've heard in the past have been challenging, but we are still working for, looking for opportunities, uh, to advance that. And then finally on this, on the curb management and recycling and energy code and, uh, uh, just a couple of quick comments there. Um, there, we do have space that's required within large buildings for uh, recycling and waste management. That's all done internal to most of the larger buildings as a requirement. Uh, so spaces are made available for that purpose. Uh, the the energy code is the big challenge. As you know, that was recently adopted and that has presented a lot of, uh, challenges to the industry and we're still working with them to implement that and try to find ways to um, ease the the transition a bit. It has been a bit of a, a challenge for everyone. Uh, and then I think just finally, um, uh, when it comes to the curb management, yes, that is, um, planning for the future there and how that space gets used. Uh, I know the transportation department is leading that effort. They're in the process of selecting a consultant now to help us with that project as we move through the rest of this year and into next year. So more information on that will be coming back to the council, uh, at a later date. So that's a, I think I got most of the questions, but if not, um, council members on, uh, give me a call and happy to chat.
Thank you so much, Mike. Very helpful.
Councilmember Lee followed by Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I want to add my compliment to you guys, uh, for, uh, the wonderful value and the work that you've done to the success of what you've shown, you know, the amazing uh, in increase in the economy, you know, of the city. Uh, dating back to, uh, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Uh, as you know, you know, look at the chart nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. It tells you a real picture, very good picture. Um, you know, as you know, economy runs in cycles, right? Normally, you know, historically, ten year cycle. Uh, but you know, when you running cycles, it goes and come down, goes up and down, it goes flat. It doesn't always goes up. Right? So, but in our case, you you notice, you know, we we came up from recession, two thousand eight, nine, ten, then it goes up. But it just, it goes up way up, way up, way up. You know, you really make a jump, a plateau. It's a, it's amazing because when you have a recovery, there are a lot of things you have to do to sustain the recovery. And that's a lot of things you guys do. Everybody, lots of people in the city does that. You understand, realize the opportunities, the trend, what do you have to do? And you encourage it. You do a lot of innovation, you know, in stuff, stuff that encourage people. And they will continue to move up. So you establish a new plateau. Uh, you know, and from there you move, keep, keep going in the cycle. And, uh, you know, we, 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 we are going in the cycle. And, uh, the the technology, the stuff that you have done, implemented and you guys working hard, start staff managing, you know, all of the things that you do and other people do. You mentioned about, you know, other departments in the city and other people. Business as well, don't forget, the private sector and don't forget, uh, government. We do a lot of things too, and it's not just, you know, one department. And, uh, so I think that really is all part of what keeps Bellevue and moving up to this plateau in nineteen thirty, uh, twenty thirteen, fourteen and just keep going. And then even though we have a dip and, uh, it's going to have a cycle somewhere, but because of what people we have do, we have done and will continue to do so, uh, we've learned to do even better. Uh, we're gonna see another boom cycle coming. So I think what we see is temporary. You gotta, you cannot argue against, you know, this the hundred year cycles, but the key is how do we respond to them? How do we continue to build during, you know, not so good, uh, robust year? You don't just sit around doing nothing. You work on developing vision, skills and customer service and so that when the opportunity, the economy picks up, you are there to make it for the new height, new move. And you're do, we're doing this. We're doing this. So I think it's amazing. We started, you know, you you don't, it don't happen just yesterday, last, last year. It's ten years ago, twenty years ago. And, uh, you know, the the amazing thing, we should pet ourselves in the bags. We are taking, you know, we are working hard. We're not sitting back and you're gonna make new highs in the future. So I'm very optimistic. And, uh, so, uh, my first final question is, this is a real question. We just through, went through pandemic. We see a lot of new development coming. And that's part of, you know, the hard work, the success we have retained. What are we seeing in this new building? New, you know, hi, new influx? Are they giving us any messages that we're prepared? We are encouraging, we are doing whatever we do to even get to a new height because we know that, you know, uh, virtual meetings and of, you know, office and home and how, what, what's make, what's going on in terms of office space development? In terms of, you know, what other construction businesses and what can we know that you guys are, we are going to be all preparing to say, hey, we are there ready for the next move. If you are ready, we're gonna make a new height. If you are not ready, you gotta go back to the same place we have before. And that's what distinguishes us from a, a good city, the great city, from other cities to what we are in Bellevue. So I'm asking you, are you making some of those observations? What are we learning? And I want to maybe.
So I think, I think Councilmember Lee, we are always kind of paying attention to what's happening out there and making adjustments that I think has been part of our success is is really paying attention to what the market and what our customers are asking for from us. Um, we have a role to play to make sure that we are enforcing the city's codes to make sure the buildings are safe and they're aligned with the, with the vision that the council has set. Um, I think as far as the offices are concerned, I mean, we are all, you know, rethinking the, the way, the shape that the future office takes. But there's still going to be a demand for office space. That's what the market is telling us. That's what's being built out there. Tenant improvements will be different in the future. The typical, you know, cubicles will probably be something that looks a little different uh, in the future because I think it's this hybrid work environment that I think will probably prevail. But everybody is, is still, uh, thinking ahead, um, planning for what that will look like as we get more experience with it. So we'll, we'll continue to, as you suggest, um, uh, is paying attention to what's going on to make sure we stay well positioned for the future.
Okay, uh, Council, uh, Deputy Mayor followed by Councilmember Stokes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mike, Jake, Liz, thank you so much for the update. Um, I'll, I'll add on to the accolades. You're doing great work and, uh, uh, it's, it's amazing the amount of growth going on in Bellevue right now. So most of my questions were already answered, but I did want to uh, touch on one thing, Mike, that you had mentioned about, um, uh, predictability of the, of, of the permits. I'm, I'm just curious. What are some of the key markers or the, or the best practices that you're using in order to maintain that, that predictability? I'm sure that you know, changes to, based on the size of the project. Um, but, um, can you, can you speak to that a little bit in terms of how you maintain that predictably and what that looks like right now?
So, uh, Jake, I'm gonna, since you're the one that watches the data, maybe I'll uh, ask for you to weigh in on this as well, but a few things, um, very quick, uh, Deputy Mayor. So for the major projects, we negotiate a, a, uh, a timeline essentially that for the project. So it is uh, an estimated timeline, but we agree with the development team on their deliverables as well as the city deliverables, deliverables through the life of the permitting, um, process uh, to try to build in that predictability. It may not always be as fast as people want it, but they prefer predictability uh, and then give us speed. So we, we try to hit that mark. And we also pay very close attention to the data. So we do a lot of database decision making when it comes to resourcing, forecasting, figuring out what types of talent we need, uh, what sorts of contracts we need to put in place with consultants to backfill where we have a, 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 a technical knowledge need or just to have capacity. Uh, so we do a lot of, we have a lot of data and we use it and we've been getting more and more uh, adapt at, at, um, making that data available for our, our team, but also for our customers so that they can see what's going on as well. Uh, so I think that is, uh, some of the work we do around predictability, but we also do process improvement and system improvement as well. Jake, I don't know if you have anything you want to add on top.
Just a couple of, of additional, uh, comments. Thank you for the, the question, uh, Deputy Mayor. Um, I think as Mike highlighted, you know, being transparent with our information, we post our, our average timelines out there on the website. Um, so customers can look at those and plan their project, um, whether there's some ebb and flow in that. Um, sometimes that happens. Um, we also pay really close attention to things that we can control. So the time that it takes us to review of initial permit application, for example, and when we see slight variations in that, we work to make adjustments, whether that's bringing new staff onboard or, um, distributing the workload, looking at using consultants, things of that nature. So I think those are some of the things that we do and we try to react to what's going on in real time to be able to make those adjustments.
Correct. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I'll wrap this up and, uh, say the benediction for the meeting tonight. Uh, no, this has been really great and I, I do listen to everybody and a lot of comments and questions have already been asked and answered and all that and um, I think it is, um, it's good to get this retrospective look and then see where you're going forward. I did want to, um, mention one thing that makes a difference and I've, I've observed a lot of other cities here and other places and how they work and and, um, one of the things that makes your work, um, successful and all this planning we're doing is that we have a very cohesive and, uh, also very robust, um, team and and I think the leadership team and two people sitting up here over your head there, uh, Nathan and and Kate and other and and Brad and the old, the team. I see that in, and we hear from other people about that, how it works together and how, I think that makes a lot of difference in putting all these pieces because if you're not working together, then stuff goes off here and there and you find other cities that um, get bogged down in one area or something happens and they don't, uh, come together and work together and particularly your work, uh, with the community development and, uh, development services and going to meetings together and going to meetings with other, uh, other group, you know, other parts of the staff, uh, I think is very uh, also one of the reasons we're, we're doing so well. And we, um, are following up and we've had a good steady, uh, sense of, uh, what we planned for in, in the, you know, in the past and sending it forward and then taking advantage of, um, the fact that people woke up and found out, well, Bellevue's doing something really great and let's go there. And, um, instead of, some places get kind of panicked or they don't get their systems put together. Uh, the staff and and you've been a, a big leader in this is, has really gotten uh, the, everything ready and and really took the challenge and, um, uh, have, uh, you know, and the, the data shows it's just amazing. Um, you know, and things we did five, ten years ago and it's like Councilmember Lee was mentioning, it's, it's a continuum of what we've been doing. So I just, you know, great congratulations and and, uh, really appreciate the report and how this all ties together. And I, I do think it helps, um, you know, council law, council members to, to understand, uh, how this all fits together. It helps us in trying to, to put all these pieces together as well. And so, you know, uh, great report, much, uh, appreciated the work and, um, one thing I did want to, we haven't talked about, but I know you're working on things in the creative economy and and as the Councilmember, um, Barksdale said, um, you know, we're we are inundated with this sense and we tend to focus on the big buildings and things, but there's a lot of pieces of that. And I think one of the things you're, you're, uh, and and development services are gonna be and and community services are gonna be working together on is uh, how do we, how do we take this, this growth downtown and make it a, a city that really is so comprehensive? And and that's another piece. Uh, it's not directly in the department, but what you do certainly affects a tremendous amount of that. And I think Councilmember Barksdale's questions were good in terms of how can we, and and how can the council help, uh, really focus on, uh, the, the mom and pop shops or, or, or the, uh, uh, you know, arts and and and, um, culture and all these other things. And I know you've been very helpful with working with East Up and and starting talking to other groups that are coming in and working. So you're, the point is you're, you're not just sitting there doing your, your, your specific planning or development work and all this. You're really working a broader, uh, and a broader scope and being a part of the whole overall team, which I think makes a tremendous difference in um, how we have been able to respond to, uh, this push of people coming in and saying, hey, this is the place we want to be. And, you know, it, that could have broken down with all the pressure and everything else, but I think you have made it so it's even more attractive, uh, for people to come here. And that's great. Very much appreciated. No questions or, you know, things, but I just want to let you know, uh, and follow up on this. It's, it's a good report.
It is, and I agree with my colleagues. I would just, I'm just amazed that we had that online permitting capacity. I look at all the permits you issued in two thousand nineteen and and twenty and and just, um, uh, I guess two thousand twenty and half of twenty-one and think most of those you couldn't have done if you didn't have that capacity. So that's, that's amazing. And to know, uh, somebody told me that Bellevue was the top office real estate market in the country. I mean, that's just, that's amazing to me. I got that from CBRE. So, um, anyway, really proud of the work that you've done. You've been instrumental to Bellevue's success and I want to thank you. We all do. So, uh, that is the end of our meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. I hope you have a good rest of your evening. We'll see you next week.